Again, thank you. Take your seats. We'll get started with the town meeting tonight. It's 6:30, and I now declare the 2018 Vernon Town Meeting to be in order. Please stand for a pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silence to those who lost last year.
(Inaudible)
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing. There have been many members of our community, especially those who've served our town for decades that we've lost in the last year. Please stay standing for a moment of silence and a new memory. Thank you. Please be seated. Again, just to reread the opening of our warning, we are acting upon the following articles not involving voting by Australian ballot. Voting on Town Meeting Article 1 and School District Article 2 along with School District Article 3 are tomorrow at the Town Office Building downstairs from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Any remaining articles on the warning tonight will be recessed until Wednesday night beginning at 6:30. And we will also give the school board a chance to discuss Article 3, which is the school budget, which will be voted by Australian ballot tomorrow. Just to go over the meeting rules briefly, Robert's Rules of Order are the basic rules of order for this meeting, except where Vermont law takes precedence. You cannot change Vermont state law unless you get a majority of the legislature to agree with you, but you can change Robert's Rules with a two-thirds vote if you desire. All registered voters will get a voter card, which you should hold up when you are looking to be recognized. This is what a voter card looks like. And there were several people in the audience, because of their status, various town and school governance positions, they will be allowed to speak without objection unless the body objects during the course of the meeting. I see several here. School Superintendent Lyle Holiday, School Business Manager Frank Rucker. I believe Town Administrator Michelle Pong is here, as well as School Principal Mary Ross, and even Fire Chief Todd Capen is here. Todd is temporarily not a resident of Vernon. We hope that changes fairly quickly, because we like having you in town. The meeting is also being recorded tonight by Brattleboro Community Television for broadcast on Comcast and Southern Vermont Cable, Channel 10, or online at brattleborotv.org later this week. Again, for the viewers at home, when you stand to be recognized, please wait for one of our microphone passers to come to your location. Use the microphone if you possibly can. An article must be moved and seconded by the body and then restated before it's under consideration and debate on the article may begin. After I restate the motion, the person who made the motion has the right to speak first about the article. Articles may have only one amendment to be acted on at a time. You can amend the amendment, but you cannot amend the amendment to the amendment, because not only would you be confused, but so would your moderator be. After you've spoken once on an article, you'll not be recognized a second time during discussion on the article or amendment until all other voters who wish to speak on the issue for the first time are given the chance to do so. Again, Robert's Rules only allows a given speaker to speak twice on a given motion and limits the duration of speeches to a total of 10 minutes. Voting in all matters by voice, division of the House, or by paper ballot. Division can be requested by one voter before or after a voice vote. Vermont state law provides for a paper ballot vote on the request of seven or more voters. This means that I could ask for a voice vote and declare the motion passed, and someone could request division of the House, and then someone could request a paper ballot. Debate may be cut off by a motion to move the previous question along with a two-thirds vote. All motions, remarks, and discussion must be addressed to the moderator. I'll do my best to recognize you in the order that you have raised your hands. Again, you must be recognized to speak, even if all you wish to do is to move the previous question or move to cease debate. Your speeches must be confined to the merits of the question. You'll not be allowed to engage in personal attacks on a member of the body or their motives. Vermont state law prohibits consideration of articles that have not been warned. You can't take binding action under the issue of other business, and you cannot amend warned articles in such a way that they would deal with business that has not been warned. To help me figure that out, our town attorney Larry Slayson is here to give advice and counsel in those locations. Please let us know where you are. Thank you. My role as moderator is to help you accomplish the business of what you intend to do. Please raise your hand and ask questions if you don't understand what's happening, or if you think what's happening is wrong for some reason, or if you want to do something but don't know how. Please tell me if I'm ruling improperly. You have the right to challenge the moderator's ruling. Before we move on to the school board's discussion on Article 3, I'd like to introduce one of 30 members of the Vermont State Senate and one of two to represent Wyndham County. Let's give a warm Vernon welcome to State Senator Becca Ballant.
Good evening. As Tim said, I'm Becca Ballant. I live in Brattleboro with my two children and my spouse, and it is my pleasure to serve with Representative Mike Hebert behind me. When I first started in the legislature, I don't know if you remember this, Mike, when I first started, he said to me, "It's so nice, Becca, that we finally have a millennial in the Senate." Now, I'll be 50 this year, but I appreciated the sentiment.
Still, we have to remember to me.
That's true. So, one of the things that I really enjoy about serving this county is that people like Representative Hebert and I can have a really close working relationship, even though we're on opposite sides of the aisle. And I cherish the ability that we have to communicate about what's going on in each of our committees, and party does not get in the way. So, I am grateful for him for welcoming me in the legislature. It's my second term in the Senate. I was recently elected the Majority Leader in the Senate, and I do the bulk of my work on the Economic Development Committee in the Senate. It's really my passion. It was the reason I ran for office, and it's really what drives me to continue doing the work for this county. You may have heard that last session, we were able to work across the aisle with the Governor and members of both parties to pass $100 million housing bond for the entire state, something that was very needed, not just here in Wyndham County, but in most parts of the state where we do not have adequate housing at all levels, especially for what we would call workforce housing. Katie Buckley, who you might know, serves as the Commissioner of Housing. Many of you know her from just down the road in Guilford. And another one I have the pleasure of working with, she does an excellent job in her job as Commissioner of Housing, and we are both working this session to continue finding ways to have more housing here in Wyndham County that are appropriate for people who would like to stay in their homes and perhaps create an apartment within their homes to be rented out to either themselves and then rent out the rest of their house, or for someone who's relocating to the area to work here. I also do quite a bit of work on retraining and retainment, as well as more development in terms of a skills mismatch that we have between a lot of our young people graduating from high school across the state, that those who don't go on to any kind of housing, excuse me, any kind of additional training or college, and we find that there are some mismatches in the skills that they need and the jobs that are available. So, we'll be continuing our work on that. Another thing that those of you might be interested in, in terms of the rebirth, the rebuilding of the economy here in Vernon, is that we're really looking to find a way to make it easier for small businesses to get themselves registered through the Secretary of State's office. And there's a proposal that we have that will be partnering the Agency of Commerce with the Secretary of State, so that there will be a one-stop portal for small businesses, so they do not need to jump through all of the hoops that they've had to in the past to get their businesses registered. So, those are just a few of the things. I don't want to take up too much of your time. I wanted those of you who don't know me to see who I am and know that I am working on behalf of your town. I look forward to hearing from you either in the old White Pages, the phone book. I'm the only Ballant in Vermont, so please give me a call or reach me on email. So, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Before we open discussion on Article 3, the school district budget, I'd like to introduce State Representative and School Board Chair Mike Hebert for purposes of introducing the school board.
First of all, I'd like --
There you go.
First of all, I'd like to thank Senator Ballant for coming here tonight. Now?
There you go. That's better.
That's better. Can you hear me in the back?
Talk loud.
So-so? Okay. First of all, I'd like to thank Senator Ballant for coming this evening. She doesn't have a lot of time to stay, but I'm sure if people had a couple of questions and want to grab her in the hall or something, that'd go over well. Again, I'd like to thank her for being here. She's very busy. She has to visit on Town Meeting Day a lot of towns in Wyndham County, so thank you, Becca. To my far left is -- that's kind of an odd phrase. Okay. With Becca here, that's an odd phrase. At the left side of the stage is Sandy Morrison. She's a board member. Walter Broe is the clerk of the board. The vice chair of the board is --
Carrie.
Carrie McKenny?
No.
McKenny? No. What are you? Who are you?
Amadon.
Amadon. I knew you had the same name as somebody else.
I'm Carrie McKenny, though. It's fine.
All right. Carrie Amadon. And to my right, my wife Deb Hebert, and she's also a board member. And I'm Mike Hebert. That was tough. I followed that up good.
So, given the introduction, we will now permit the school board to make a presentation on Article 3. Shall the voters of the Vernon School District approve the school board to expend $5,730,650, which is the amount the Vernon School Board has determined to be necessary for the ensuing fiscal year? It's determined that this proposed budget, if approved, will result in education spending of $15,300 per equalized pupil. This projected spending per equalized pupil is 8.2 percent lower than spending for the current year. Chair would recognize Mr. Hebert.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. If folks would turn to page 52 in their town books, that gives you, it's basically a summary sheet of what's going on with our budget. There's a few lines I'd like to highlight and then put it out to discussion. I don't know if it's up on the -- we can't see the screen yet, so I'm just going to move forward. Hopefully, you all have books. The first line, and I'll give a history first. If you all recall, back in August, we had a vote in town to remove ourselves from BUHS Number 6, and a town decided to do that. So, we're no longer members of -- well, we will no longer be members of BUHS Number 6 after July of this year. And in doing that, one of the things that happened was the amount of money that we pay as a town to BUHS Number 6 didn't show up in our town budget, and now it will. So, if you look at the first line, it looks like our budget went from $4 million to $5.7 million. And it did, in fact. It's an accurate reflection of what we spend on education, but it now includes the cost of the high school, which it did not before. The high school used to send us a separate assessment for that. So, it is not an increase in our overall spending here in the town. It's an accurate reflection of what it is to do our K through 12 district. Prior to that, it was K through 6, separated from 7 through 12. So, that's where that $1.7 million comes from. It's not new money. A little farther down, if you look, another impact of leaving BUHS Number 6, we get to count our students once again as Vernon students. That, I believe, is on line 16, education spending per equalized pupil. And if you'll note, it goes from $16,675 to $15,300. So, we will be way, way under the cap. And the bottom line of our budget, if you look at between lines 37 and 38, you'll notice there's some percentages there. If folks remember, we have a ramp off from the closure of the plant to get us to 100% tax rate. This was the last year of the ramp off, so the board expected that our tax rate would go up 9% this year. So, we were trying to figure out how we're going to mitigate that, and we were able to do that to the point that instead of going up 9%, our budget is actually down 2.8%. So, we're very pleased with that. And we're also very pleased our principal, Mary Ross. Mary, if you would stand up so the town could know who you are if they see you around town. Mary's the new principal this year. We're very pleased to have her here. And one of the first things that Mary brought to our attention was the need for what's called a STEP program. It helps kids with emotional and discipline problems. So, she asked the board if we could do a STEP program here in Vernon, and it's a pretty pricey item, but she managed to work within the budget and not add any new money to the budget, transferred things around, moved things around. She and Mr. Rucker did an excellent job in that. So, we're going to have a behavioralist in our schools starting next year, which is a plus. Most schools are heading in that direction. And what we see as an end product of that is that will give us an opportunity. We have students that are not taught in our school. We have to send them out of district because they have problems that we can't handle. Having the behavioralist here in school, we anticipate, will allow us to bring those students back here. And it's not only good for the students, it's good for all of us in Vernon, because it's very, very costly to send a student out of district. So, not only is it a great program that she found the money for, but in the end, it's going to actually save us money within a couple of years. So, we're very pleased with that. Overall, as I said, that's the summary of the budget. There are not a lot of huge changes in it. We're looking at transportation issues, the number of buses we utilize and stuff like that. So, we continue to look at different aspects of the budget to provide the best education we can at the most affordable price we can for our students. Having said all that, I think at this point, unless another board member has something to offer, we would like to hear from you, because we don't get this opportunity but once a year. So, if you have some questions, we'd really appreciate hearing them.
Questions and/or comments for the school board on Article Number 3? Over there, the voter card held up about halfway down the line.
Yeah. Monsignor, thanks. I don't know if actually this is a question to the school board or to the rec department, but the numbers are different. The rec department says this year, $232,000 will be going for rent, and in your school budget, it's last year's number of 217 or 210. So, there's about $11,000 difference. So, I'm wondering if that can be explained. And the second question I have, and I'll throw it in, and you can answer first, is I've been asking for a number of years, what are the minimum requirements for physical education programs in K through 6 as given us by the state? And I'm wondering if you could address that.
Mr. Hebert, I'll have you comment, and then I believe Treasurer Turnerly has a comment or two as well.
Well, if she's addressing his first question, why don't we let her go first?
Chair would recognize Treasurer Turnerly.
Senator Turner, the treasurer. The figure that is in the town report for the Vernon Townside is not accurate. At the time, the budget was voted on by the select board. They didn't have the figure, so they estimated it. When it comes to the budget, they will be making a motion to change it to the lower figure. Thank you.
Mr. Hebert.
Okay. There are state standards for physical education for time per students in the school, just as there are the library. You have to have a certain percentage of time per students. I'm not sure what that is at this point. I'm not sure if Ms. Holliday or the principal could address that, but if not, I can assure you that within the next couple of days, I'll get you that information, but it would be in the state standards. So, I don't know if either of those ladies have something to offer.
Superintendent Holliday is recognized.
So, it's all laid out in what is called the Educator Quality Standards, and there is a requirement for 30 minutes of physical activity a day. That is not physical education class, but 30 minutes of activity. And I'm sorry, I don't know the requirement of how much class, but as Mr. Hebert said, I can find that and let you know.
Further questions from the board? Middle of the room, over on the side.
Mary Ann Gardner, can you discuss what the difference between the high school costs last year to this year for the tuition allocation and all?
Mr. Hebert.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Mary Ann came to our informational forum and asked that question, and I asked her if she would ask that question again here this evening. We didn't have the answer that night, so I appreciate that. But it's one of those cases of be careful what you ask for, because as we found out in talking to Mr. Rucker, and maybe he can address this a little better, it's not as easy a calculation as saying the number of students from Vernon that are at BUHS Number 6, and then the amount of money we're paying them. There are several other factors that come in. It's a very complex formula from the state to us, as most formulas are from the state. And after the conversation with Frank, the one thing I can tell you is that it is less expensive to pay tuition than it is to pay assessment, and that difference is individually determined on an annual basis. And again, the formula is very complex. I don't know if Frank can address it any better than that, but I didn't understand what he was talking about when he tried to tell me.
If you would like, I will get you a microphone. Wait for the microphone, Frank. You're on TV.
Well, I just wanted to ask, did you want more information, or was that adequate answer?
I'm just --
We'll get a microphone to you very shortly.
I'm just trying to figure out whether it makes, if it made more money or would save money by tuitioning now.
Okay. Well, let me make a couple of comments. So, tuition is very different than cost per student, and I think that was your question. If we stayed in UHS Union, what would it look like this year as opposed to what we're presenting? So, what you saw, Mary, can you put the tax page up again, page 52? What you saw there is the calculation that every school district in the state does. This is a state. It's a state document, that page 52. It is the derivation of the school tax rate. So, to compare, to answer your question, you would need to understand, well, what did that look like for BUHS? And I can tell you that that same calculation where Mr. Hebert showed us on line 27, that $15,300, that same number for the high school is about $17,000. It is typical for the high school to be a more expensive cost than an elementary district because they run driver's ed programs, cooperative ed programs. This high school has a career center, so that is typical. But your other question gets to, well, now you're paying a tuition rate. Well, your tuition rate due to the high school is $15,500, and whether you're Vernon, or Dover, or Marlborough, or any town in Vermont that wants to send a student to BUHS, and you're not a member town, as you once were, or you are now, you won't be next year. That's a tuition rate. So, Mr. Hebert was referring to, a tuition rate is calculated on a very different basis. Here is how the tax rate is calculated. It's all spending, which if you scrolled up to the first line, that was the $5,707, and then it's minus revenue. See that $503,000 of line 10? It's spending minus revenue. That revenue is things like the $221,000 that this gentleman has just asked for. That's pre-K rental income to the district that we don't have to raise from taxes. So, it's spending minus revenue is net spending. This is that $5.2 million number on line 14, divided by the number of what they call, the state calls equalized students. And as, again, Mr. Hebert pointed out, our number on line 15 went from 219 kids to 341. So, that's reflecting, you know, counting all of the BUHS tuition payment in the $5.7 million figure, but also counting the kids that derive that on line 15. And that's why our cost per student and the number that we go to the tax table with is what it is. So, see, to answer the question, you would need to see the same document for BUHS. You would see that UHS's numbers are higher. Current year, it was a proportional tax rate. Everybody in Vernon paid, see on line 30, you might want to scroll up. Line 30, everybody paid 63.84 percent of the Vernon tax rate, which last year was $1.49, line 29. And then you paid the balance, you know, almost 70% is the Vernon Elementary, and then the other 30% was the high school tax rate. And that was, if you scroll up a little bit more, Mary, I'm sorry, the other way. Line 36, you see that $1.708 involved? So, you paid 30% of that tax rate, and you paid 70% of the Elementary, and on your tax bill in your mailbox from the town office, you add those two numbers up, plus the town tax rate, and that's the total. So, when you get into a question of, okay, now what are we paying for tuition? Tuition, I could go through that, but it's a whole different calculation, as Mr. Hebert indicated. It's basically regular ed spending. It's UHS's spending, take away special education costs, take away transportation costs, take away food service costs, and then divide that number by estimated students. It's a very different number. It happens to come out to be $15,500.
Further questions on Article Number 3? Do I see any? Going once, going twice?
Tim, I have that. Is that enough?
Yes. Superintendent Holliday will be allowed to comment.
So, the Educator Quality Standards say each school shall provide students in grades K to 8 with at least two physical education classes per week. Each school shall offer options for students in grades K to 12 to participate in at least 30 minutes of physical activity within or outside the school day. Physical activity may include recess and movement built into the curriculum, but does not replace physical education class. So, there's not a specific time for physical education classes.
But not time.
But not time. Correct.
The time of class is determined by the school.
Yep.
Further discussion on Article Number 3?
Tim?
Mr. Hebert.
Yeah. Just so people are aware, this year, we were also anticipating that property taxes from the state might go up about nine cents. We've been getting good news over the last few days as budgets are being presented to towns. The state had anticipated that the average town budget would go up 3.5%, which would result in an equalized tax rate of going up by nine cents. The budgets are coming in under 2% almost across the state. So, the anticipation now is that if there is a tax increase, it'll probably be in the range of four or five cents rather than the nine cents the state was thinking they'd have to levy. So, there's some good news there. And for anybody that wants to follow it, there's a bill H911. It's the new taxing structure for education. Very complex. If anybody would like information on that, not this evening, we got to get on to other business, but please contact me and call the State House, call my cell number, email, however you want to get in touch with me. And if you can't figure out how to do that, let Tim know what you need, and he can grab me pretty quickly at any time, and I'll give you whatever information we have on that.
Anything further from the school board?
Just thanks, folks, for your continued support and for your welcoming of our new principal. She feels very welcome to the town, and I think it's a great fit. So, thank you all.
With that in mind, we'll take a brief recess to allow the select board to take the stage and the school board to take their leave. We're in recess. I now declare the town meeting back. I now declare the town meeting back in order. And before we get to discussion on Article Number Four, I'd like to introduce, for purposes of introduction, the Chair of the Select Board, Josh Unruh. He'll introduce the board and make some opening remarks.
Good evening, everybody. How you doing? As Tim said, I'm Josh Unruh, the Select Board Chair. And I will go down through the list, and I promise I will get everybody's name right because I wrote it down. Vice Chair, Sandy Harris. I'm trying to, this is not the same order. You guys sat out an order. It's all your fault. Gene Carr, Jeff Dunkley, who disappeared, and then Steve Skidnawski, who is our clerk. I'd like to thank the school staff and all the town staff that took the time to get this prepared today, all the budget work that was done. If you haven't heard already, glad to share the news that an agreement has been reached between the state, numerous interveners paving the way for the sale of the Vermont Yankee site to North Star. With this anticipated sale, the acceleration of the decommissioning process by decades will allow us to get something new onto that site and start providing money back to our tax rolls. There's a lot of people that worked hard on this. Special thanks to the Planning Commission. Those guys were absolutely integral in this sale, as an intervener, every single one of them. Thank you very much. The Select Board and the Planning Commission continue to work together on this deal to make sure that Vernon comes out on the upside through the entire process. Currently, our town plan is underway. Again, something that the Planning Commission is doing with the help of Michelle Pong, our town administrator, that does nothing but help us through the grant process through the state. We get to have a full outline of what our town plan is. After it's done, you can come see a copy of it in the town office. It's really riveting. So one of the initiatives this year for the Select Board that I set forth as a chair and that our Select Board got behind was to start working with our school board more and better. You'll see during the budget presentation that we actually saw $6,000 savings this year due to working together with the school for maintenance of the town. So, next thing, Mr. Skidnawski. I'd like to say special thanks to you for your time on the Select Board as the clerk. You did an excellent job for us, poring through all the numbers on a regular basis. For two years, you did it faithfully, and we appreciate it very much. Steve has been in multiple capacities representing the town, including the Connecticut River Joint Commission, the Stream Bank Erosion Committee, and as well as Endicap, the Nuclear Decommission Citizen Advisory Panel. Thank you very much. I got a little something for you.
I'd like to thank, I don't know if this is on, but I'd like to thank everyone who has helped out over the years, too. I didn't do anything really all by myself. There were a lot of people that worked as a team back from my days on the Planning Commission, and certainly working at Vermont Yankee and getting to know a lot of townspeople through that venue. So I'd like to thank you all for that support.
So the Select Board has worked hard this year, as we have in years past, to identify opportunities to decrease cost while maintaining a level of service that our town expects.
Mr. Unruh, are you getting into the budget at this point?
We're going to go through a little presentation, and then we'll get there.
I would like to introduce the article before you do that.
Okay. I don't think it's necessary, based on the slides.
Well, all right, go ahead, and then we'll go from there.
So this year, as we go through the slides, you'll see a little stock ticker in the bottom corner. And that little stock ticker basically shows what the estimated tax rate will be per 100,000 of the assessed value of your house. So as we make changes throughout the course of the night, whether it be through an article change, or whether it be changes to the budget that we set forth, you'll be able to see an estimated cost of what your decision is, what your decision is. Again, it's estimated, it's based on our current information, our current grant list, which obviously all changes, you know, as soon as the budget's set. But it gives you a pretty good idea of what we do here and what we decide here and how it affects your pocketbook. It is not going to work. You want to hit the slide for me? Okay. So I'm not going to go into the article because we haven't opened it up yet, but I wanted to just show a basic general budget reduction and where the major savings came from. You guys can kind of see, you know, where it came from, the town clerk's office, the Select Board budget was down by $7,000. General expense went up by $6,000. Planning Commission went up by $2,000. Public safety down, $2860. And you guys will see all these reasons once we get into the article and the discussion. Building and grounds down $6,000. That's the collaboration with the school. Cemetery's down, sheriff's down $163,000. That's a huge difference. The fire department's down $2,844. So some of the major changes to the Select Board budget, emergency repair and replacement, and basically retirement contributions, leading to a decrease of $7,014 that you saw on the previous slide. It's a 4.5% decrease over last year. Town clerk's office, the hours of the assistant town clerk were reduced this year from 20 to 15 hours a week. And then you'll see some additional expenses due to three elections this year, the voting skinning equipment, the marriage license quarterly return, which I'm not going to even try to explain that because it's ridiculous. 5.3% decrease on the town clerk's office side. The next slide shows you some points of what the town clerk's office has accomplished this year and some goals going forward. We've had kind of a revolving door of assistant town clerks this year, and Tim's done a very good job of maintaining his position through that. I appreciate that. So building and grounds, this is the collaboration with the school. That is for the lawn mowing for the town office and the memorial. The school maintenance staff is going to take care of the mowing this year, which has lifted that $6,000 burden off the town. There is no increased cost on the school side to do that. They're utilizing the hours that they already have in place to be able to come over to the town and collaborate in that way. The Vernon Rex budget and estimated total revenue shows a 4% decrease over last year. Town garage operations, 1% decrease over last year, and that's due to fuel oil. Cemetery caretaking, this is a huge decrease percentage-wise, 26% by the cemetery committee. And these guys are doing an awesome job, finding funds that already are there, that are already established, that we're being able to use to take care of our cemeteries and show a decrease and not have to raise as many taxes. Insurance costs, just like everybody else, everything went up this year for our town employees and for the town. And this is the big one, and I believe my last slide. Fiscal year 2017, '18, we spent just over, or just about a quarter million dollars on the sheriff's department. The Select Board this year has elected to go with a $70,000 year package. That number's wrong. It says 7,000, but it's supposed to be 70. Going from a 20-hour-a-day shift to 40 hours per week shows a 70% decrease year-over-year, $163,000 in savings. So that will start out our articles.
Well, now that we are in the article, again, the article is, "Shall the Voters Authorize Total General Fund Expenditure for Operating Expenses of $1,869,157, of which $1,553,607 shall be raised by taxes, and $315,550 by estimated income." Chair would recognize Mr. Unruh for purposes of making a motion.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the voters authorize the total general fund expenditure for operating expenses of $1,869,157, of which $1,553,607 shall be raised by taxes, and $315,550 by estimated income.
It's been moved and seconded, the voters authorize total general fund expenditure for operating expenses of $1,869,157, of which $1,553,607 shall be raised by taxes, and $315,550 by estimated income. Mr. Unruh, you have the floor.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to make an amendment. I move to amend Article Four to read that voters authorize the total general fund expenditure for operating expenses of $1,831,413, of which $1,515,863 shall be raised by taxes, and $351,550 shall, or by estimated income.
So a second. Moved and seconded that the article be amended to read that voters authorize the total general fund expenditure for operating expenses of $1,831,413, of which $1,515,863 shall be raised by taxes, and $315,550 by estimated income. Mr. Unruh, you have the floor for the purposes of the amendment.
This, you know, was something that we took painstaking time. We're the ones that look at these numbers on a daily basis, and we think about our residents and how to continue to make life in Vernon affordable in every way, shape, and form, and for every class. This is the best possible budget that we can bring forth to you today, and I hope you accept it.
Could you please explain your amendment? I was hoping that you would do that.
Oh, the amendment was the school rental fee that we talked about earlier in the school budget process.
Discussion on the amendment to Article Number Four, back of the room, if we could get him a microphone. Mr. Gassett.
Mr. Gassett. Under Robert's Rules of Order, Section 27, I would like to move to divide the question. And the reason for dividing the question is secure, important, careful consideration in exactly the items drawn to the budget.
It's been moved and seconded. I'm going to ask that the town attorney rule on the legality of that question under Robert's rules. In fact, maybe it would make sense to have a brief recess while Mr. Slayson, Mr. Gassett, and Mr. Unruh join me at the podium. We're in recess. Please take your seats. The meeting is back in order. If we could get Mr. Slayson a microphone, I will have him repeat what he had said in our general discussion, and we'll move on from there. Mr. Slayson.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The individual who made the motion has agreed that rather than vote each department individually, that he would accept a friendly amendment that we discuss each department individually, but we will still be voting an entire budget with a final line item. But under Robert's rules, under Section 27, the individual does have a right to request that the question be divided. And rather than do that and vote each department, which would take a substantial amount of time tonight, the Select Board is prepared to address any questions department by department, should there be any, and that'll still move this along.
And I would further rule that we need to, and I would further rule that we need to deal with the First Amendment presented by Mr. Unruh before we can go on to that part of the budget. So again, the amendment to the article was that voters authorize the total general fund expenditure for operating expenses of $1,831,413, of which $1,515,863 shall be raised by taxes, and $315,550 by estimated income. Are you ready for the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. The article has appeared to have passed, actually, the amendment appears to have passed. The amendment has passed. You have Article Four as amended. And now, based upon previous agreement, we shall go down through the budget by department. And looking at page 23 of the Select Board budget, page 23 in your town report, we shall begin with the town clerk's office. Questions and discussion on the town clerk's portion of the town budget. Mrs. Miller, and please wait for a microphone. It's coming in back of you.
I move we amend the article by adding $4,243.13 for the purpose of restoring the assistant town clerk's position to a 20-hour-per-week during the upcoming budget year.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded, and I need to get the numbers. What were those numbers again? That we amend the town clerk's budget by $4,243.13 for the purpose of restoring the assistant position to a 20-hour week. Mrs. Miller, you have the floor. We've moved it and seconded it.
I want to thank the Select Board for working very hard to reduce the total amount requested. And it's out of character for me to add money, for those of you who have known me for years. But I do get over to the town clerk's office occasionally, and we appreciate the hard work that Tim does. And I know it's a very stressful position. And at times, he will be away. And we need someone who is qualified to be the assistant town clerk. And if we only offer a person 15 hours a week, it's hardly worth their time to, you know, people work because they need money usually. And this person needs at least $20, I mean, 20 hours a week to make it doable for them. And if they're needed to fill in, well, Tim may be out sick or whatever, they need to be someone that we can depend on. And I feel that this is what we need to attract, the type of assistant that we need for this town.
Further discussion on the proposed amendment? Seeing none, are you ready for the vote on the amendment? Again, the amendment is to increase the town clerk's budget by $4,243.13 for the purposes of maintaining the assistant position at a 20-hour-per-week position. All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye. Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The Chair is in doubt. All those in favor of the amendment, please stand. And I will need a couple of BCA members to do the standing count. Will, let's see here. Who do we have on the BCA who can count? Mrs. O'Donnell, we need your services. There's been at least a couple members of the BCA who have had the flu, and I need to make sure that this count is done accurately. Mr. Rappaport, you should take one side. Mrs. O'Don, actually, take this side, Mr. Rappaport. Mrs. O'Donnell will take the other side. And Mrs. Harris will help with any other thing. This is what you call planning on the fly. All of... All of the ayes can sit down, the nays, please stand with your voter cards. Please be seated. Please listen to the results of your vote. On the Miller amendment, the votes were 73 yes and 40 no. The amendment has passed. Further discussion on the Town Clerk budget. Over on the side of the room, looks like Mr. Hicks. Microphones on the other side.
Just a point of information. I wondered, the voter scanning equipment, how is that affected by the number of elections? If it's equipment, do we rent them or how does that work that suddenly we need three times as much of the budget?
I am in a difficult position because I'm both the clerk and the moderator and I cannot talk about items of substance. If there's somebody else who could do that, Mrs. O'Donnell.
I can maybe take a shot at it. Is this the ballots and everything else that goes along with the three elections? Is that the increase in the cost? Can you say yes or no?
Quite frankly, I don't dare say anything. In fact, Mrs. Turnley could, either that or Mrs. Pong could perhaps do that. Get a microphone if you would, please.
The price for the voter scanner equipment is to reprogram the actual equipment. It saves hours and hours of counting in the middle of the night after every election. This year, there's three elections, so it's about $800 per election to reprogram the scanner.
Further discussion on the Clerk budget. Seeing none, oh, Mr. Doyle, if you could wait for the microphone, sir, we're on TV.
I'd just like an explanation of what, what is being, I'm confused. Voter, voter scanner equipment, $1,800. What is that?
That was what was just discussed.
What is that?
Again, Mrs. Turnley, could you please provide an explanation? Microphone is coming your way.
Cindy Turnley, Treasurer. The voter scanner is, when you vote, they put the ballot in and it counts the ballot. And every time they have a new election, they have to reprogram it. And it's eight, it's about $800 each time they do that. There's three elections this year, so. Does that count $100? $600. $600.
Cindy, what are the three elections?
So that's done by a professional group that we?
Yes, yes, it is.
We hired somebody to do that?
Yes. We have somebody that does that, yes. And it has to be done before each election.
I went to your office, you showed me an invoice.
Yes, yes. Okay.
Further discussion. In the back of the room, Mr. Pond.
George Pond here. What are the three elections we got? This week, is there something going on that I don't know about?
I don't think I would be breaking any rules to let you know that there was an August primary and a general election in November, plus the town meeting election next March. If no further discussion on the Clerk's budget, we can move on to the Treasurer's budget. Discussion on the Treasurer's budget. Right over here. Microphone is right in your face.
I would like to ask the lights to be turned on, so I'm getting older and I can't read my book. The light's here.
We will take care of your point of personal privilege. Let us know if you can't see the PowerPoint. Thank you. Discussion on the Treasurer's budget. Seeing none, discussion on the Lister's Office.
Could you slow down?
Well, I want to make sure that people have a chance, and I didn't see anybody's hand. Did you have a discussion point on the Treasurer's Office?
You went, I just need to have it slowed down.
All right, I will take that into account. Back of the room, Mr. Hall. Get a microphone, right over, right there.
How can we discuss something when it wasn't even up on the screen for us to review?
There's no changes. There's no changes from last year, so we didn't do a slide.
Mrs. Pong, could you wait, could you get a microphone and say that again, please?
We decided not to do a slide for every single department this year because it's just a lot of information on the board. If anything changed less than $1,000, we didn't highlight it on a PowerPoint. That's just the only reason.
Mr. Unruh.
Yeah, as Michelle said, we only did slides for major changes. Anything that you want to see is in your book.
Anything further on the Treasurer's Office? If there's no questions, we can move on to the Lister's Office. Any questions on the Lister's? Unless there's any objection, we'll move on to the Select Board portion of the budget. Questions on the Select Board portion of the budget. Over here, Mr. Hicks.
Again, just some information that would be helpful. In printing of the town report, it's gone up by $500 as well as some mailings. We're not mailing them out anymore, we're mailing out postcards. And it looks to me, and I could be wrong, that when we were mailing them out, we were paid $1,400 and $1,500 for printing. And now we're back up to $1,500 for not printing. We're not printing as much. Can you explain how that happens?
I believe it's because the cost of printing goes up and we're just making sure that you
Any further questions on the Select Board portion of the budget?
Hey, Tim.
Mr. Unruh.
Just as a side note to the town report, we did save $3,000 in the production of the town report this year. We had previously paid someone to put it together. Michelle Pong, our town administrator, put it together this year for $3,000, I think $3,000, maybe $3,500 savings.
Back of the room, the person with the voter card up. Could you please stand? Thank you.
Faith Jovan, I've got to put my eyes back on, sorry. I was wondering what the contributions and gifts was for. It's at least $700.
Select Board and their administrator is queried if they so choose. Mr. Unruh.
It's a $200 line item, not a $700 line item.
Further discussion on the Select Board budget. Mr. Hicks, we'll recognize you on this one for a second time.
I noticed the 457 contributions, they were reduced. When we moved from a defined benefit to defined contribution, the general statement then was that the town would attempt to do at least a 2% contribution. Does this represent a lowering of that contribution or does it represent fewer numbers of people to be contributed to?
Mr. Unruh.
The contribution hasn't changed year over year. It was budgeted at 12.5, I believe, is the number. The contribution has stayed steady at 10.5. There has been no increase or decrease in the contribution, just the difference between what was spent and what was budgeted.
Any further questions on the Select Board portion of the budget? Middle of the room, and we'll come to the front afterwards.
What's the EOC building expenses?
The board is queried. Mr. Unruh.
So the EOC, the Emergency Operations Center, which is the house next to the Vermont Yankee Maintenance Garage, right on Governor Hunt Road, prior to the Vermont Yankee closure, Vermont Yankee gave us that building and paid for everything, heat, electricity, the finest cable, the best, you know, telephone, all that kind of thing. Since then, we have taken those expenses over. We still utilize the building at no cost, but we do pay utilities now and we have reduced everything to the worst possible cable you can get, the worst phone lines. Dave has to use a carrier pigeon instead of an actual telephone and those are the
Further discussion, right here at the front row, I believe that's Mr. Doyle.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, just being a moose now, what I'm seeing on the screen here now, is this?
Please hold the microphone.
I'm looking at the screen here now. Is, what, what am I looking at here and how it relates to what's on this page here?
If we get the other microphone to Mr. Unruh, please.
Sorry, I didn't know what slide we were on. So these are the major changes to the Select Board budget. Again, we didn't do anything on the PowerPoint slides that were less than $1,000 change in the Select Board budget. So the major changes in the Select Board budget was the emergency repair and replacement, which reduced by $5,000. The contribution, as I stated earlier, has not changed to our town employees' retirement funds. We have just simply reduced the budget down to what we actually spend.
Any further discussion on the Select Board portion of the budget? Seeing none, we shall move on to the general expenses portion of the Select Board budget. The last half of page 24 in your town report. From the back of the room.
Faith Jovan, I was wondering why the telephone expenses are $14,000.
The board is queried.
I don't know how to answer that question because I don't work for the telephone company. But we have multiple lines in several different locations. The EOC building, the rec department during the summer, the town office has several lines, the library, we have, yeah, highway, fire department, everybody's got a telephone line. Unfortunately, there's, there's not a whole heck of a lot we can do about what they charge us for it. And it is a substantial amount. We did, I think, last year, reduce a few lines within the town office, got rid of an old fax line, did several things like that that have helped in the reduction of those, reduction of those lines and a reduction in that cost. But it is significant and, you know, we look at this stuff on a regular basis and try to be efficient as possible.
Again, the backside of that room, and then we'll come over to this side.
John Wieldon. Josh, like the fire department, it already comes out of their budget for the telephone. Each of the departments, if I correct, their budgets, that's what comes out of their line item for the budget. So why is that $14,000 if the department's already paying their amounts?
The board is queried.
If you look at the telephone, it was overspent, it was 13,173.44, and it was underfunded by 173.44. So last year, we budgeted $15,000 and this year, we dropped it $1,000 to $14,000. Well, I'm just saying that's why the figure is what it is.
Chair would also recognize Mrs. Pong for purposes of an answer.
I'd also enclose our internet, I think.
Mrs. Turnley.
Cindy Turnley, Treasurer. What that line item is, it's, it's the internet as well as the telephone for all the departments except for the rec. It's fire, it's all of the police, the phones the police use, town garage, and it's also the internet in the town office building. So it encompasses all of those. A few years ago, they decided what they were going to do was to lump it all together into one instead of taking it out of each department.
Further discussion on the question, we'll go over here to the lady in blue.
Paula Ewen, I just have a question, I guess would be for Ms. Turnley. Just wondering if you could explain to me the county tax.
Mrs. Turnley.
It's, it's based on our grand list and it's tax sent from the county, for each year, we have to pay to the county. It's based on what our grand list is. Does that make sense?
Because I was inquiring to Governor Scott's office in regard to a county tax.
Yep.
And he told me that the state of Vermont does not have a county tax unless you're placing it under something other than.
No, we get it. We get a bill from, from the county each year for a county tax and it's based on our grand list. We, this year, it's $26,134.
Right. But I was just curious because I want, you know, an explanation of what it is if I got this information from Governor Scott and was saying there is no such thing as a county tax in Vermont.
I don't know, we pay the bill to the Superior Court. It pays for the courts.
The courts?
Yes. We pay it to the Superior Court, it pays for the courts.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, we'll go in the front row and then after that, the second row. Okay, second row then. Mrs. Amadon.
Thanks, Carrie Amadon. On the county tax, you said it's 26 this year, why is it 52 next year? Is there a reason why it's doubling?
Mrs. Turnley.
Thank you. It's not, that's one of the items, the county tax was one of the items that, when Josh made the amendment to low, to lower the amounts, he lowered the school rental and he lowered the county tax to 26,134. He just didn't say that when he made his motion.
We'll go to this gentleman here and then Mr. Skibnyowski afterwards. Mr. Doyle.
We're talking about county tax and somebody, she said that it was lowered and it looks like it went up. It's at 52,300.
Mrs. Turnley can explain that again.
Thank you, that is a misprint. We thought, when the budget was passed by the Select Board, they thought it was going to be, they estimated what they thought it was going to be. When Josh just made the amendment at the beginning, one of the things he changed was that 52 to 26,134. So if you just pretend that's not there and pretend it says 26,134, because that's what it should be.
Mr. Skibnyowski.
Thank you, Tim. This is in reference to a question that was asked earlier about the telephone costs. And it should be important to note that- and it should be important to note that those costs also include essentially packages that we get from Comcast for things like the fire department, the town garage, the sheriff's department, et cetera. And they include things like, I believe there's even television or cable reception along with internet, and it is not cheap, but it certainly appears to be necessary for each department that has requested that funds. I would think, you know, perhaps the fire department could comment, or the police department or whatever, about their use of that if there's some additional questions.
Further discussion on the general expenses portion of the municipal budget. Mr. Doyle, we'll recognize you for a second time on this portion of the question. Microphone's coming your way.
Yeah, on the telephone, telephone portion, the $3,500. I don't know if I'm getting into the swamp here, but who's our carrier? And when we have departments being...
Please hold the microphone.
Who's our carrier? And when they're sending us a bill, what are they billing? Are the separate departments, do they have their own mobile phones that are being billed as part of this? Or is, do you follow what I mean?
I'm going to have Mrs. Turnley seek to answer that question, then we'll go there next.
Cindy Turnley. Our carrier is Comcast, and each department gets their own bill, and they submit them in, and we pay, and it all comes out of that one line item. We also have internet, which is SovereNet, and we, the employees pay for their own cellphones. They do not reimburse for cellphones. They do have them, but they pay for them themselves. So, it's Comcast. We used FairPoint before, and it was extremely high, so we switched to Comcast a few years ago.
Chair would recognize Mrs. Sherrill.
Several years ago, before this was all bundled, each department had their own bills. They did their own thing with their telephones, with however they wanted to do it. The telephone bill was much higher than this. We went through a lot, getting all the phone numbers, figuring this all out, calling, doing a lot of work, getting this all bundled, and the telephone bill is far less than it is or was with each department doing their own thing and negotiated a contract. So, it was for a period of time. I think the initial one was three years. So, the contract for price can be negotiated every time that contract is up.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the general expenses portion of the budget? The gentleman with his hand up in the corner.
Brian Teague. If that's the case, then why is not the rec department part of that bundle?
The board and/or administration has been queried. Bueller?
That's a really good question. I'm trying to think what part. I think it's either at the pool. All right, Mary Lynn, you helped through all this mess a couple of years ago. Answer the question.
Mrs. Sherrill is recognized.
I really wish I knew every nuance of our phone lines. I just don't.
We didn't include the rec because they get internet through the school and some other things that were bundled in there through the school, so it did not increase savings or costs to include them in that bundle. And it actually increased by having their phone line over at the pool. So, they were excluded from that bundle.
Further discussion back at the corner.
Hi, Jeff Dobro. Why is Comcast and SovereNet not one? Why didn't you bundle with Comcast? Is there a savings going the way you are now divided, or would you be better bundling?
The board and/or administration is queried. Mr. Unruh.
Yes, there was a savings of having them separated. So, I swear to everybody, we do the best we can to make sure that our expenses are as low as possible. It's, you know, it's something that we look at on a regular basis, and when contracts come up, we do the best we can to have the most efficient plan that we can for each department.
Further discussion on the general expenses portion of the budget. Seeing none, we're going to move on to the planning portion of the budget. Questions on the planning portion of the budget? Yes, Mr. Parker, wait for the microphone, sir.
When you announce which budget, would you also give the page number so we can all follow along?
Sure. We are at the top of page 25 now, sir. I figured that since the town budget is on pages 23 through 29, I'm taking them in succession. So, that hopefully is easy for you to follow. Questions on the planning portion of the budget? Seeing none, let's move to the recreation portion of the budget. Questions on recreation? Over here in the corner, I believe that's Mr. Hicks.
Munson Hicks, I have two quick questions. First of all, I see in your report that you did work for the forest, for signage and stuff. There's a $182,000 fund. Did you, in the rec department, access any of those funds to pay for the work that was being done at the town forest? And the second question is, I noticed that there's an estimated increase of $52,000 in anticipated revenue from last year to this year. That's $1,000 bucks a week. What programs and stuff do you envision will create that much new income?
The board and/or the administration is queried. Mr. Unruh.
So, I'll let Cindy answer the first one as far as where the dollars come from. The second question is, we already raised that amount of money. We had a very good year this last year. I will let Seth speak to it because he's waving his hand, and go for it.
Mr. Deo.
Thank you. There should not be a $52,000 estimated increase. There should be a $5,000. We went from $185,000 estimated revenue to $190,000 is how we've looked at our budget. So, our net expense went from about $168,000 last year to about $162,000 this year.
So, Mr. Hicks, I'll give you a follow-up question.
Sure. Then, on page 30, which numbers are wrong if the 17, 18 recreational income is $138,000 and the 18, 19 is $190,000?
Again, he is looking at the, you're looking at the estimated revenue, which would be on, Mrs. Turnley, help me out. Page 30 is where the estimated revenue portion is.
What we did was we combined the after-school program and the rec income together. We used to separate them. We combined them together this year because our auditors saw no reason to keep them separated. So, that takes into account a portion of it.
Oh, I see. So, the $17,000, $138,000 is what the actual income estimation was?
Right.
Okay.
And the other question you had was where the money for the work done in the town forest came from? It came out of the Jay Miller Maynard Fund, Maynard Millard Fund, sorry.
Further discussion on the recreation budget. Back of the room, Mr. Pond.
In looking over some of the other budgets, I noticed that, you know, health insurance, of course, that's happening for everybody, you know, whether it's social security or on the job, it's going up a little bit. I just happened to notice that the rec department, that I don't know if it consists of more than two people or not, but went up $6,000 for the rec department.
Mrs. Turnley, you have a question to answer.
It consists of four people, three of which have family plans, and one of which has a two-person plan. So, it's four individuals.
I was curious if you could tell me, what is the people that are insured? What is their percentage of that amount of money?
We pay 20, the employees pay 20%, and the town pays 80%.
Further discussions on the rec department budget. Back of the room.
Faith Jovan. Customer service, $5,494. Is that the front desk person for the summer? And it's like, if it is, that's like a high school student getting a lot of money for a few weeks.
The rec department is queried. Mr. Deo.
That is the front desk at the pool. That's based on minimum wage and the hours that we are open. There's no way for me to pay them less than minimum wage legally, so.
Further discussion on the rec department budget. Over in the corner. Microphone's coming your way.
I have a serious question to ask. Why aren't there more volunteers able to work at the pool? The other departments in this town had to cut their hours and cut their people and had to take on volunteers, and I think the front desk at the pool could be operated by volunteers. I'm not sure about anywhere else. I also think that, I've been to the pool when my grandchildren have had swimming lessons, and there seems to be a lot of extra teenagers around them. Are they being paid as helpers or what? Why is there so many kids in that pool? And another question I have, can you, like, have different hours for adult swim this year? The Friday night time from 5 to 6 is, seems very impossible for a lot of us adults that want to go swimming, and maybe Saturday mornings?
Mr. Deo, you have several questions.
Well, I can say right now that we do currently have adult swim Saturday mornings, so that is already in there. As far as volunteers, the recreation department utilizes volunteers throughout the year. We would not survive without volunteers. We are based on volunteers. Our coaches, other than myself and my brother, are volunteers. We have people that routinely volunteer to help out. I mean, I couldn't name them all. It would take all night. So, we do utilize volunteers greatly. As far as specifically at the front desk, I think you would probably agree that volunteers are absolutely fantastic. Things come up for volunteers. I can't make it in this morning, and I would venture to guess that that's even a challenge for the library, though I don't work there, but I bet you there's things that probably come up, and sometimes having to mix and match on some days is certainly a challenge. And so, we put this in the budget based on what we feel is necessary. We're also dealing with a great deal of financials and things that they need to have very consistent answers and, you know, behavior issues where if you have a rotating staff at the front desk, it's hard for consistency. So, we feel that this is the most responsible way to do it, and if the town doesn't, that's their decision, but that's where we're comfortable with it.
Further discussions on the rec department budget. Mrs. Ewen.
Paula Ewen again. I have, Seth and I have been talking back and forth. There's not a lot for our teenagers to do here in town, and I was wondering if we could utilize the recreation department for something, or to come up with something that our teenagers could do, which would in turn bring more money into the recreation department and keep our kids off the street, or out of forever, so to speak. But, you know, was wondering if that had been given any more thought, or?
Mr. Deo.
I think we always look at our programs, and they kind of evolve based on needs and based on, you know, what the community is telling us. I mean, we do have, you know, we have some programs for teens, but it's certainly a challenging age for us to reach. You know, we've done, we do some teen nights and things such as that. I mean, I think you and I talked about utilizing the gym more for teens, and we have offered those programs in the past. The gym is a kind of a commodity in that it's, a lot of people request to use it. Some of those teen nights, the participation kind of dwindled a little bit, so we removed a couple of them and replacing them with, you know, more utilized programs. But it's certainly something that we always look at, and if there's a better way to reach them, I'm all for looking at it.
And again, on the same token, was wondering, the roller skate seems to be very, very successful. I remember.
Point of order. What is your point of order?
That we're discussing the budget and not the programs?
This does have to do with the budget, kind of.
Is roller skating in the budget?
The recreation department is not involved with roller skate. That's a PTC and a school function.
Oh, I see. Okay. I apologize.
It's all right.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Further discussion on the recreation department budget. Mr. Doyle, wait for the microphone, sir.
Thank you. There's a lot of money here, and there's not a lot of breakdown of what all these items are comprised of. Is there a place where I can go and find out, as for instance, the director's salary, is that one person, or is that two persons, is that 10 people? The assistant director's salary, is that one or 10? Contracts and rentals, what, you know, where do I go and get this information so I can look at this? I'm not saying that I disagree with this, but I'd like to know, I'd like to see a line item somewhere, somebody could show me what this is all made up of.
The board and/or the administration is queried. Mr. Unruh.
You can go to town clerk's office and take a look at all the invoice for all the services and things, or, excuse me, town treasurer's office, take a look at all that stuff at any point.
Thank you. Further discussion on the rec department budget? And I don't see any, so we're going to move on to the buildings and grounds budget. Questions on the buildings and grounds budget, top of page 26. Back of the room, Mr. Gassett.
Dale Gassett. I understand that if I heard the Select Board chair correctly, that the lawn mowing at the school is going to be done by the school employees. Is that correct?
The Select Board is queried.
The lawn mowing at the town office will be done by the maintenance staff of the school. Correct.
So, some of the other issues, is there a plan to take care of some of the other issues at the town office building? When you walk around that building, and probably because I'm a builder, I see that with a different set of eyes than the rest of you guys, but the storm windows are in pretty much disarray. The cupola really needs a coat of paint in a really bad way, and some of the other issues that need to be addressed. Is there a plan to affect a change in the overall condition of the town office building maintenance-wise?
The board and/or administration is queried.
We...
Mr. Unruh.
We have a maintenance budget. We have a capital plan budget, so any of those things that, you know, are a problem can be fixed, yes. You know, do we have a professional contractor coming through the building and giving us a checklist? No, we don't. It's an expense, but it's obviously a maintenance issue as well, so it's something that, you know, we take a look at and have to make the determination.
Mr. Pond.
But if you had a friendly, live-in-town-type contractor that just happened to walk through and hand you a list, that would work it out pretty well, wouldn't it?
Mr. Unruh.
Fine. Find me one.
I think Mr. Gassett might be able to handle that.
Further discussion on buildings and grounds, Mr. Gassett, for a second time.
You know, as a follow-up, I would be certainly glad to present to the board a list, certainly not with price tags, but something that had a, a list of things that need to be done, and I would even do it in a, in a questionable fashion, or of exactly the imperative, you know, down to just general maintenance, I'd be, I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you. Further discussion, buildings and grounds, Mrs. Sherman.
Not objecting to the school mowing the lawn, but how are we now able to combine school and town services, when before, we couldn't combine those services, can you explain that?
The board is queried, Mr. Unruh.
What do you mean by "we couldn't"? We just didn't.
That's always my understanding, we could combine the municipalities.
Mrs. Harris.
It was mine too, but when we went to the meeting that the school board suggested it, they said it could be done.
That's really strange, because they were the ones that always were saying, "We can't, we can't, we can't, we can't." And it, because, and then it was always more, it's always more expensive to raise that money on the school side than the town side, so, we're raising it on the school side instead of the town side, or is that raising different now because the school is not part of the district anymore?
No, it, it doesn't change anything, as I mentioned in my presentation, that there is no additional hours for the maintenance staff, the school board got together with Ian Spencer at the time as the maintenance supervisor, and said, "What can we do to help the town in offsetting some cost without raising, you know, any cost on the school side?" That's what they came up with, so Ian felt that they didn't need any additional hours for them to be able to do it, they felt that there was enough time within the day currently, with the maintenance staff that they had, that they could do it without costing, or without raising anything in the school budget, so there's no additional cost at all, there's only a reduction.
Okay.
Mr. Doyle, down front, wait for the microphone, sir.
All that, all that being, all that being said, you've got one person over here mowing the lawn, and then he comes over to the town and comes over and mows over here, and he does some work over there, and does some work over there, are his expenses being divided between departments? Between the one budget for the school, and then the one budget for the, for the town? I mean, is this being mixed up, or is this, I mean, what's the arrangement here?
The board is queried.
The arrangement is that the school is then going to take care of the maintenance for the town office, so there is no expense to the town any longer for that maintenance, so the current budget that the school has, they felt they did not need to raise that budget at all to be able to make that transition.
So the expenditure is coming out of whose budget?
The expenditure will, there is no real expenditure, because it's, it remains the same dollar figure.
Well, when somebody mows, when somebody mows a lawn, and they're out there putting in their time, and they're putting gas into the mower, and the mower's being used up, it's coming out of somebody's budget.
It's coming out of the schools, but the school did not need to raise their budget at all to do so.
But somebody's doing the work, and it's being the money, so, accounting-wise, how's that being divided up? I just don't understand this, the logic doesn't fit in my brain, I just don't get this.
I'm not sure how better to explain it.
Help, I don't know.
Further discussion on the maintenance and grounds budget, back corner of the room.
Apparently, the guy's gonna go up and do it for nothing.
Uh, could you stand and state your name, please?
Stanley Sage, apparently they're gonna go up and do it for nothing, and we're gonna send a cow up there to eat it, it's gonna cost something for gas.
Any further discussion on the buildings and grounds budget?
Can we call the question or something, please?
On, our previous arrangement was that we would go from department to department before we called, before we ceased debate, and so what I'm gonna say is we can move on beyond buildings and grounds and go to cemeteries next.
Thank you.
Which is in the middle of page 26, we're on cemeteries, questions about cemeteries? We are in order, please maintain order, questions about cemeteries, middle of page 26, seeing none, we'll go to the Vernon seniors, Vernon seniors also on page 26, questions about And I see no questions, so unless I hear some, I'm gonna go to town van on the bottom of page 26. Mr. Hall.
Can we go back, I was trying to get my card up, I was trying to ask on the school vans.
Uh, could you wait for the microphone, sir?
Yep. Can we go back, I was trying to get my card up to ask the question on the, the senior van?
Actually, we're on it now, sir.
Oh, oh, okay, my question was, according to that, the town van, everything was moved to the highway budget, so why do we have a budget that's still in there for the town van if it's moved over to the highway department?
The administration and/or the, we're all set now?
Forget what I said.
Alright, cool. Any further discussions on town van? Seeing none, we're gonna move on to historians and South School Museum, questions on that portion of the budget. Historians and South School Museum. Mr. Gassett.
I don't have a question, but as a member of the historians, all I'm gonna do is encourage you to support this part of the budget, because we are rapidly losing track of our history in this town, and the, the museum is strictly on a volunteer basis, which I think everybody knows, and when we open it, it's all volunteers, so the monies in the, in there are strictly for, you know, just to support the museum and the historians, thank you.
Mrs. Sherman. Microphone coming your way.
There's an item four, that has historic record preservation and supplies.
And that's on the top of page 27?
Right, and if you look at page 68, article 20, it has the same thing.
You gotta send in Michelle Ball.
Mrs. Pong or Mrs. Turnley is queried.
Sorry, I was trying to get up here before anybody mentioned that, that is a, an error in the, the town report, that should read lawn mowing, under historic, where it says historic supplies.
Further questions on historians and South School Museum? Seeing no questions, we'll go to contracted public safety services, questions on contracted public safety services, Mr. Teetz, you had your hand up first.
Brian Teetz, I'd like to make an amendment that we increase the budget to, by 168,260, to bring it to the 232,960, keeping the level of service at 20 hours a day.
Moved and seconded that the line item be increased, what was the number on that again?
The number, if my math is right, would be increasing it by 168,260, which would bring it to the identified amount of 232,960, as shown in the report.
So it's been moved and seconded that the line item be increased by a total of 168,260, Mr. Teetz, do you wish to speak to your amendment?
Yes, I, over the years since this started, we've had a lot of discussion, and I'm sorry to say that one of the heroes that I felt was Mike Ball, who's not here, but there's a reason that we have this presence here, I can't speak for fire, rescue, but it was pointed out that there's a lot of stuff that goes on when they respond to different issues, and it's very important to have a, a network that can respond with them, so that they can either enter into the buildings, or whatever, as well as the safety of the whole town, and I don't think that can be done on 40 hours a day, or 40 hours a week, I'm sorry.
Further discussion on the proposal of amendment, Mrs. Lockever, then we'll go
Brana's Lockever, I'm single, I'm not married, so don't, please.
Ms. Lockever.
Don't confuse me with my mother. I'd like to make a friendly amendment, it's a correction to the number, that number up there, 162960, is the correct number, not 168, da-da-da, and I, I subtracted it myself, added and subtracted it, so I'd like a correction.
If, if you're okay with that, we'll make it.
I'm okay with that.
Okay, 162,960. Alright, further discussion on the proposal of amendment, over here.
Norma Manning, and if I could ask the sheriff, is he here? Okay, hi, recently, we had a drill, of a lockdown drill nature, at our school, and at the time, the sheriff's department was not informed that it was a drill, are you willing to let the public, can I let them know how long it took you to get to the building?
The sheriff's department is queried, if it wishes to be, and-
Do you know the answer?
Tell you what, wait for the microphone, sir, and unless there's objection for body, we'll have Sheriff Clark speak to the question.
Alright, and I, I could follow up with that.
Okay.
I wasn't expecting that question, so I do not know the answer on the response time.
What we were told at our meeting was it was a minute and 30 seconds, and so I'm wondering what would be an anticipated amount of time if the sheriff or someone had to respond from another barracks, besides being in town?
If we weren't here, if you go to the 40 hours a week, and we were not here during a school day, if it were, if the trooper were to come out of the Westminster Barracks, you're looking at probably a 15-minute response time, however, if you had an actual event, you may, you would likely get a response from Brattleboro PD, or potentially even out of Massachusetts or New Hampshire, it depends on who happens to be the closest. I'm, I'm pleased to know that we responded in less than 90 seconds, so, but I wish we would have been notified that it was a, a drill.
Further discussion on the proposal of amendment, back of the room? Yes, that's you. Mrs. Hall.
Hi, Vicki Hall, I've known quite a few of you, I'm an EMT with the fire department, and I would really like to thank Mr. Teetz for what he had to say, I guess I'll be Mike Ball for this. We go to places, we go to overdoses, we've been to quite a few overdoses in town, we've been to scenes that aren't safe, and that is our first thing, we do not go in if it's not safe for us to be there. We have a really good relationship with the sheriff's department, we have quite a few of them we work pretty closely with, and to have, to know that most of the time, they're here, they're here to help us for whatever we need, whether it be something big, or something small, but to keep me safe. There was an incident in Guilford, a few years back, where somebody got attacked, a female got attacked, by somebody who was a fake call, and that scares me, this is a little town, but this little town isn't as little as we all think it is, there's a lot more going on than people know, so, I really want to see the sheriff, I'd like to see him here 24/7, I know that's not gonna happen, but it's my safety, it's my husband's safety, it's my coworker's safety, it's people in my town's safety, I don't want to stop helping people in the town because I'm scared, so that's my two cents.
Further discussion on the proposal of amendment over on this side, and then we'll go on that side, and then we'll come back.
Paula again, number one, I've got to say that I'm absolutely disgusted that, that proposed 40-hour-a-week police protection, that's crazy, I mean, the budget cuts that I see are in little increments here and there for the top departments, but when you come to our safety, as far as the sheriff and/or the fire department, I think, and I agree with the lady back there, it should be 24/7, and I think that the way it is, we're on town line, tri-state, and the drugs are coming in and going out like crazy, and I don't particularly want my grandchildren, children, parents, whoever, in this kind of jeopardy, I think it's absolutely absurd, and that's all I have to say, thank you.
Over on this side, first we'll go to the gentleman against the back window, and then we'll come up further, and then we'll go over here, it's impossible to see 360 degrees, and I apologize.
I'm behind you too.
Mr. Unruh, did you wish to respond at some point, or?
No, I'm just gonna make your comment.
Okay, we'll go here, and then here, and then here, and then here.
The number that we're working with, the 232,960, was for the last fiscal year, can we get an updated number for this fiscal year from the sheriff's office as to what it's gonna actually cost?
The sheriff or the administration is queried. Sheriff Clark.
Michelle, do you have this slide that we sent?
This is the one you sent me.
No, I didn't send, I didn't send you this one.
This is what you sent me, just with your logo on it, that's all I got from you.
So, these are the last year's numbers, or your current year, at 232,960, our proposal was about a 2.1% increase for the next coming year, starting in July, so it would come out to 238,085. Again, it's approximately a 2.1 cost of living, and a slight increase in our health insurance that we're in, that, well, we're already in our health insurance year. So, which was our proposed, that would keep your services where they are right now, which is 20 hours a day, and we cover the callouts, so occasionally, when we're not on, if a deputy needs to respond, we do the callout within that 238 number of the 20 hours a day, so you're getting 20 hours plus, we have had a few callouts that we've been able to manage within that number.
Okay, we're gonna go around, I did recognize the gentleman here, and then we're gonna go back to these parts of the room, and then back to this side afterwards.
Munson Hicks, I would actually like to ask the sheriff's department a question, obviously, this number of 70,000 brings us in line with the other towns around us, Guilford has 40 hours a week, I believe, or thereabouts, we are far and above any other town in coverage, and I understand people's nervousness and worry, but realistically, can you give us an idea, aside from the routine traffic stops, speeding DUI and stuff like that, how many calls a year have you responded to that were essentially an in-progress incident, as opposed to investigative burglary, which does not require you to be there within 90 seconds, because it's, there's no one, a danger and stuff? Can you give us an, an idea of how many incidents in the town that you covered that were essentially where people were in fact, in, in jeopardy in that instant?
The sheriff is queried.
If I could ask the, sort of give me just a couple minutes, Captain Mark Anderson is here, who's brought his tablet, thankfully, who should be able to pull that up, it's difficult looking at our system for, I guess the answer, like, actually happening at the time the call comes in, but he may be able to pull that out, I certainly don't have those numbers off the top of my head, if I don't, he probably doesn't either, so I'll have to look them up, though he's very good, he's very good at what he does.
We'll go over in this direction, Mr. Dunkley.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, in the interest of full disclosure, I don't like paying more property taxes than I can afford, I think there's probably a few more people in the same boat in this building now. I have a question for the town treasurer. If this budget- If this budget is retained as we developed it on the select board, what kind of tax increase can we expect for next year versus this year?
The treasurer will give you an answer shortly.
Cindy Turnley. If everything stays right where it is right now, and all the articles and everything are passed, and the budget is as we've talked about so far, our tax rate would be .0386 more than this year's.
Okay, so just a slight percentage more. Mr. Moderator, can I follow up with another question?
You may be allowed to follow up, yes.
If this, if the law enforcement budget is increased back to what, 238,000, what kind of tax increase percentage can we expect?
That's what I just, I just put in that figure that the sheriff gave us.
No, my original question is if this budget stands as is with $70,000 for law enforcement...
Oh, with 70? Oh, I'm sorry.
I want to know the difference between 70,000 and 238,000.
Okay, hold on one second.
Mrs. Turnley.
Thank you, sorry for the delay. Right now, if we left it at 70,000, our tax rate would be down .0130. From what this year's was, that we're in now.
And what tax increase could we expect if the law enforcement budget was moved up to 238?
It would increase by .0386. So right now, with it at 70, it's a decrease from this year by .0130. If you put law enforcement in at their figure that the sheriff gave us, it would be an increase from this year's by .0386.
Okay, that's the rate, but do you know what the percent increase would be? What is that?
I can tell you what it would be per 100,000.
I just want to know what our taxes would increase by...
Okay, so at 70,000, per 100,000, it would be, our tax rate would be on a $100,000 home, And then, the last, with it at what the sheriff gave us, it would be 490.38. So it increases it by $190 per 100,000.
Okay, can you, I'm a little hazy on the rates. Can you translate that into a percent increase?
While she's doing that, can I just speak to what she's saying?
Just a slight delay while Mrs. Turnley works through that.
The increase would be just a little under 1%. With it at the rate that the sheriff gave us.
Further discussion on the motion, we're going to go to Mr. Unruh, we've got several over here, then we'll work our way back, back here. Mr. Unruh.
Okay, so I speak about this every year, and I will continue to speak about it. The reason that the select board decided to go with this increase this year is, excuse me, the decrease this year to the $70,000 number, is because there is no other town in Wyndham County or anywhere around that spends anywhere near a quarter of a million dollars on a police department. And there is not drugs running rampant through Guilford, there's not terrorism happening, there's not murders happening. Of course, they do happen here and there, but this, we are throwing money away with this. That's my opinion, and only my opinion. It's a quarter of a million dollars a year that we spend more than anybody else. And not anybody out here can give me a good reason why, why we would spend that additional dollar figure. I don't know why. I can't, I can't make it work in my brain why, why we need to spend a quarter of a million dollars where our neighboring towns don't spend anywhere near it. It doesn't make any sense. Mr. Hicks spoke about Guilford. Guilford spends, I think, 30 or, 20 or 30,000 dollars a year, and they're contracted with the state police, I don't believe they're contracted with Wyndham County Sheriff, am I right, Keith?
They're not contracted with the state.
So, they're contracted with the state police, they're not contracted with Wyndham County Sheriff's Department. How do our neighboring towns survive? I don't understand, I really don't. But they do. And so, as we're looking at this, you guys just heard that this one simple increase to the budget will increase your property taxes substantially. Looking at percentages isn't the thing. What you just heard from Cindy is $190 per 100,000 assessed of your home is the difference. So if you have a $200,000 home, your taxes are going up by $400 with this increase next year. That's your choice.
Further discussion on the proposal of amendment, we've had several people, their voter cards up, this lady in the third row has had hers up for the longest.
Elaine Dietrich. I'd willingly pay the extra $400 a year in my taxes to have this coverage. My daughter and I are living alone, and it makes me feel good when I look out the window and I see a Wyndham County sheriff's car patrolling our neighborhood. And I don't care what the other towns do, those are their decisions, it's the same if my daughter said, "My friends are doing this." I'd say, "Well, that's their decision." This is the town, other towns' choices. And if we have an emergency and somebody's being assaulted, you don't want to have to wait 15 minutes for police to show up. So I'm in favor of the sheriff's budget that he's presented.
Tim, can I respond?
Yeah, I do need to recognize people who have not yet spoken.
I just wanted to respond to that, but that's all right.
Okay. Back of the room, the, there's three gentlemen here in the way back of the room who have had their voter cards up, and we'll go to the lady on the aisle.
I went to the sheriff's this year, my name's Michael Root, about a house that I knew somebody was selling drugs out of, and I was told by them that there's nothing they could do. So word about drugs, why are they telling us nothing we can do and we're going to give them this much money?
We'll take these in fairly rapid succession, the next gentleman.
Hi, Jim Belleville. I just want to ask a real-world scenario because, you know, there have been a number of break-ins recently, I know there were a couple, at least attempts, in my neighborhood. If I arrive home, I find my door kicked in, unknown somebody's inside, what's the realistic timeframe I'm going to have to wait there for someone to come down and clear the house? Because, you know, I'm not Rambo, I'm not going in to clear the house myself. And then, if you come home, find the house is ransacked, you go in, how long are you going to have to wait for the cops to come down to take your report, to get all this done? This is happening to our neighbors at this point. What kind of timeframe, what's the difference going to be if you're here, you know, if they, you know, they left town 30 minutes ago, their shift is off? What are you looking at?
The sheriffs would be queried if they so choose to be. Microphone's coming your way.
So I want to make sure I'm correct, you're actually asking two separate questions, correct? So the first question is, you arrive to your home and think someone might be in the house? The clearing of the house depends on the information that we have. We had one incident this fall down here, it took a while to clear because of the information that we had, we had some serious concerns. So we had to bring in the tactical support unit from the state police, so it took longer. It could be something where we come, once we're on scene, we make an assessment, within a couple of minutes, we clear your house and help you determine what's stolen. If we have someone on call, most of the folks that are on call live within the area, most of them live here in town, you're probably looking if it's a late night or a time when we're not on, 10 to 15 minutes for them to arrive on scene, depending, you know, whether or not there's another caller we, going on, or something else happened. So that's an approximate average. But in regard to that, if you come home and find that your house looks like someone has broken into it, please do not go into your house, it's not worth the risk.
There were another couple of people in the back of the room with their hands up, you sort of recognize next.
Yeah, my name is Tom Ferris. I have nothing but the utmost respect for the sheriff and his deputies to patrol the town. But I also look at our town as a town that, a few years ago, we stood up and we voted out our police department and bought in the sheriff's department. And I look at our town as still a town in transition, and I, and I look and I think, okay, that's a big budget. You're right. Dumerson doesn't have it, Guilford doesn't have it, nobody else has the budget that we have. And I personally don't think that we need a police department 20 hours a day out of 24 hours a day. I certainly see there's a lot of room that we can negate a lot of that budget. And I'll also add that, yes, there was a lot of burglaries back in the fall, and it was one of the neighbors... To where I live, and the first responder at the time was the Brattleboro PD. So it wasn't even Wyndham County Sheriff's Department.
Gentlemen, up against the wall, remember the lady in the aisle?
Chris Parker. Sheriff, if you could please address this, I'm just curious, out of the amount of arrests that you guys have made or calls that you've responded to, could you tell us what the actual conviction rate is?
The sheriff is queried if he so chooses.
I would not have that information at hand, I'd have to, because, we don't, once we make the arrest and it goes into the court system, we don't track conviction rates. That is information that we would have to query the court and get that information back.
The lady on the aisle, we'll recognize her next. We've got several people who've not spoken once, and we'll, we'll get to as many people as we can here.
My name's Hannah Gann, I just want to give a flipside. Year after year, we hear about the sheriffs doing welfare checks on elderly people and stuff, and that's great. But I've been in Vernon my whole life, and I kind of remember that's what neighbors are for. I've had to call rescue a few times this year for a few different incidents, and honestly, the sheriff's department was not very helpful. One of them was because I had thrown my back out, and actually, the medic got there before the sheriffs did. Another one was my daughter was choking, and they came and stood there, like, there's nothing to do, and the dispatch call had actually called in the wrong age of the child, and I had a medic tell me that if they had heard the appropriate age, they would have heard faster. I also dealt with an incident where someone I know was in a car accident, and while the person was giving their report to the sheriff, his response was, "It's okay, take your time, I have nothing better else to do tonight." And I said to him, "Well, aren't you patrolling Vernon?" He's like, "Yeah, but it's not really needed." Another time, my husband and I were pulled over in a friend's driveway for passing two parked buses. And then, the sheriff said to me, "Oh, you know, I'm really sorry, I actually don't know if that's okay or not." And I told her, "I had an aunt that's a bus driver, so I would look into that." And her response was, "Well, when you find out, could you call the office and let me know?" Okay? And I had a friend of mine who had a basketball hoop completely damaged, and she called the sheriff's and they said, "I'm sorry, there's nothing we can do. I'm not willing to spend my money, and we are a one-income family. And I already give this town a lot of money, because I don't even send my kids to this school, we support it. But I'm not willing to give my money for absolutely no help." And I have loved, very dearly loved people on the fire department, and I know that when you know the people in this town, you probably have a good idea as to who's safe and who's not. I don't want them to be hurt, but come on with the service people.
Gentlemen in the back of the room, then we'll work our way forward, that would be you, sir.
Jonathan Hall. I have a couple of questions for you. My first statement, though, is you're putting a cost on, for the service, well, what you're doing is putting the cost on the lives of the providers in town. We're volunteers, we go to these calls, medical calls, we don't know what they are. Every time I've gone to a medical call, a sheriff deputy's been there to help. They do quite a bit when I'm on call, they take, if I'm by myself, they take the information down. So I'm not wasting time writing information, I can be with a patient. I'm also on Guilford Fire, they contract with the state police, and we've been told state police will be, if called, will be there within an hour. We have, what, 15 minutes for, if it's something not bad, less than that if it's something really bad, with the sheriff's department. You're putting the cost of lives upfront. Not just, not just the responders, but you're also putting the cost of lives on the responders from rescue. To be honest, if I don't have a sheriff at night, and I know I'm going by myself on a call, and I don't know the house I'm going to, I'm not going in. I'm not putting my life at risk. I don't get paid for doing this, I do this out of my heart, I like doing it. But the way we're being treated right now, you don't care about our lives. Rescue shows up, you're putting their lives in danger if we don't have a deputy there helping us. So I'm in big favor of this, we need the increase, we need the sheriff's department.
Gentlemen in the middle of the room, then we'll go to Mrs. Turnley, I believe, Mr. Unruh, and then we'll go back out here.
So if my numbers... Oh, I should be, sorry. If my numbers are correct, it went from 300 to 490, is that... Oh, so that would be a 63% increase, if my, if my numbers are correct?
Mrs. Turnley.
Thank you, I was, that was what I was raising my hand for, I reworked the figures, I'm sorry, but the increase would be 8.5%. Because the numbers that you're, we were talking about weren't the right numbers.
Okay, so it's not the 300?
No. It's from 437.53 to 490.38. Okay? It's an 8.5% increase, I'm sorry about that.
Further discussion, Mr. Unruh.
The only thing that I want to say in response to Mr. Hall is, I don't know how every other volunteer fire department works. I, you know, based on your testimony over the last few years, I don't know how any of those people survive, in Putney, in Guilford, and Dumerson, I just don't know how they're still alive. Because they don't have near this coverage, and so I'm, we're not trying to put anybody's life in danger, we're trying to bring our budget in line with the reality of what we deal with, which is increased property taxes year over year, and it's going to keep happening. We've seen a 20% increase in... We've seen a 20% increase in our municipal tax over the last few years, and the select board has done one heck of a job to reduce the budget by 20% at the same time. If we continue to add back every single contracted item and every single item that gets put into the budget and add back onto it $4,000 at a time, or $200,000 at a time, we'll get to the point where we just have residents that are gonna leave because the property taxes are too high, and then the property taxes get spread out again and again and again, and we have a town that's not sustainable.
Back of the room?
Josh, to answer one of the questions you were saying about with John, with other services?
Please address the chair.
Sorry. They wait an hour, hour and 15 minutes, for Vermont State Police to show up before they can get into the building. Depending on what's going on with that person inside, by the time they get inside, they're gonna be dead.
So how does that happen everywhere else, JJ? How is everybody else not dying around the county? I don't get it. I don't understand how everybody's not dying around the county that has not the same contracted services. I don't understand that. That's what, nobody's been able to answer for me, how the towns around us survive with the coverage that they have. I don't understand. And it's not a question you can answer. It's not a question anybody can answer.
But you talk about surrounding towns, and what they have for budgets and everything. Vernon and Norfield give the same services that we have here.
Further discussion, the lady in the middle of the room?
Mr. Moderator, we've had a rigorous debate. Would you call folks to move on?
There was an amendment on the floor, and the proper forum for doing that would be to move to cease debate.
Oh, yeah, I moved to.
You need to have a microphone to be able to do that, so people can hear you, so the people on TV can hear you.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to move to cease debate.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded that we cease debate on the question, the question has been called, so I have no other option, according to Robert's rules, than to proceed. If you wish to cease debate, this takes a two-thirds majority. If you wish to cease debate, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. We've ceased debate on the question.
Are we doing the whole budget?
There was an amendment on this particular line item. We're doing the amendment right now. We'll have a chance to do the entire budget at the end. Okay. So again, the amendment to the contracted public safety services line item would be to increase the bottom line by $162,960, or what was that number again? Want to make sure I have that number correct? Mrs. Turnley, can you help me out here?
I think the person that made the motion, the motion that's on the floor now is the wrong dollar amount. It's what, it was last year for the services that, or this year we're in now for the services. The sheriff said the amount would actually change. I don't know if we can do a friendly amendment to that. Can we do that?
Ms. Zlockever, would you like to make that friendly amendment? And if the original person who did the, and he will accept, so what would that number be?
168085. Correct?
Thank you. So, again, the motion to amend would be to increase the contracted public safety service line item by $168,085.85. All those in favor of the propos-
Paper ballot.
Paper ballot is called for. If seven people stand, we'll do a paper ballot. Seven people have stood. Please, could we get a BCA member over by the ballot box?
Could you clarify what a yes means and what a no?
I'm going to do that right now. Again, we have a proposal of amendment. Yes would mean you increase the bottom line by $168,085.85. No would mean you keep it at the originally proposed level, and you would use the first one of your yes/no cards to vote on the question. Use your first one of your yes/no cards and bring it to the ballot box. We'll be in recess while the count takes place. Polling place is closed. We're in recess while the count takes place. Will reconvene the town meeting? Listen now to the results of your vote and the proposal of amendment offered by Mr. Teetz. Voting yes, 43. Voting no, 88. One blank ballot. I declare the proposal of amendment has failed. Further discussion on the portion of the budget labeled contracted public safety services, if there's any? Gentlemen in the back of the room?
Can we end the discussion on it?
If that's the body's pleasure, we will move on to the next portion of the budget. Next portion of the budget is fire department. Questions slash comments on the fire department budget? Seeing none. We will move on to rescues operating budget on the top of page 28. Seeing none, we'll go to other public safety, just below that on page 28. Seeing none, we will go to highway maintenance, middle of page 28. Questions on highway maintenance? Seeing none. Questions on town garage operation, bottom of page 28. Seeing none. Questions on road repair and maintenance, page 29. Seeing no further discussion on any of the other parts of the budget, we're gonna move for a vote, and if we could get a corrected current figure from Mrs. Turnley?
Okay, the amount we would be appropriating would be 1,835,656.13. Oh, 1 million, I'm sorry. To be raised by taxes would be 1,520,106.13, and by estimated income is 315,550.
Okay, so with that update, the article as amended would read, "The voters authorized a total general fund expenditure for operating expenses of $1,835,656.13," of which, $1,520,000 and $106.13 shall be raised by taxes, and $315,550 by estimated income. All those in favor of article number four as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. You have passed article four as amended. We move on to article number five. Shall the voters appropriate a total library fund expenditure of $86,468 for administration of the Vernon Free Library, for which $86,486 shall be raised by taxes? Is there a motion? Motion on article five? Middle of the room, the lady there?
Barbara Oakes. I move that the voters shall appropriate a library fund expenditure of $86,468 for administration of the Vernon Free Library, for which $86,486 shall be raised by taxes.
Moved and seconded that voters appropriate a total library fund expenditure of $86,468,000 for administration of the Vernon Free Library, for which $86,486 shall be raised by taxes. Do you wish to speak to your motion?
Yes.
Okay, your microphone's coming back. Please state your name.
Barbara Oakes. I've used the library ever since I moved into town. It's been since 1979, and I know a lot of people use the library, and I think it's an important part of this village, and that if we want to have a viable, happy, successful town, we should have a library. Thank you.
Further discussion in the front of the room, Ms. Zlockever?
Those two numbers don't jive, and they should. And I'd like to ask the library director what the correct number is. One says 68, and one says 86, or something like that.
You're right.
Mrs. Turnley can clarify that if-
I was just gonna point out that we have two different numbers. I was just gonna point that out, that there's two different numbers. I don't know who has the correct figure, but I was just gonna point it out.
Would the library director be able to elucidate? Mrs. Carr?
The correct number should be $86,468. I, yeah.
For both? For both?
Yes, for both.
So if you'll accept that friendly amendment, we'll call it that. So both $86,468 for the expenditure and the same number to be raised by taxes. So with that in mind, further discussion on the library, back of the room, then we'll go over here.
Hannah Gant, what is the increase for?
The library director and/or board is queried. Mrs. Carr?
The major part of the increase is actually in salaries. Last year, the library's budget was cut by the then-select board, unknown to the library. And all of it had to come out of wages, because the line items are pretty tight. That put me in the position of becoming three people. So we went from a staff of like, four people in the library, down to myself and one very part-time assistant, about nine hours a week. The good news is, we have numerous volunteers, which are wonderful, because we would not be keeping the doors open without them. We never have a person alone in the library. We always have to have two people, so we need our volunteers, and they're, you're lucky that you have a community that stepped up and kept the library open the way they have. So the increase, the board felt, they've watched me trying to do this job, because I'm, I was formerly the children's librarian, and so I still try to keep that service going, but I'm also the director now. So my board really felt that I needed a little bit more time each week to get all of this done, and to hopefully reinstate some more assistant hours, because that consistency is very important. You know, the volunteers are wonderful, but I do need to supervise them. I need to, schedule is a constant process. And just having that consistency, so that there's certain jobs that will be handed over to people that are consistently there. So that's where the major part of that increase came, trying to put us back to a little bit more reasonable functioning level in the library.
Further discussion on article number five. In the middle of the room?
Could you give us a breakdown of any fundraising efforts that you've done this year, and how much that could contribute to the increase that you're asking for?
The librarianist's question.
We are building our gift fund, and, I mean, building, because there really was nothing there before. We have ongoing book sale that's always contributing to that. We did a second year of a capital, I mean, a campaign, a fundraising campaign, which netted a few thousand dollars. So we're building that fund. We will actually have to use some of it to cover the expenses of this year's budget, because of the cut being so indiscriminate. We really don't have enough money to staff the library. So some of that gift money will be used for that. I think our, the board's feeling is that, at this point, we want to keep building that fund, so we can get to a point where we can invest it, or at least some of it, to have a money-making situation there. But it's small right now, and to really depend on funding the library each year out of that is just, it's gonna drain it to have nothing. I mean, the library functions on its own, so that if we have emergencies, we have to take care of that ourselves. If we have computers go, we have to take that out of our budget. So it's like having a bit of a rainy day fund, and we are just in the process of starting to build that right now, and would like to continue to build it before we just drain it. So that's been our plan with that.
Further discussion on the article, the gentleman over on the side in the front?
Micron. What percentage of the town really uses the library?
The librarianist's queried.
We have over 700 patrons of a town of 2,000, so that's, I think, pretty significant.
I mean, that actually use it, or just have cars?
No, they use it. We have, I would say, a slow day in the library might be, you know, 20 or 25 people coming in in the afternoon, so it's usually more than that.
I just don't see a lot of cars there, and I just, I was just thinking, with the internet now, and you can just look up anything you want on the internet, you know, the library, and you have the big library in Brattleboro, it's just a huge expense, you know? I mean, it's for, for somebody to plan on, you know, 20 years of paying the extra money for it, if they're gonna retire or something, I mean, it's just, it's a huge amount of money.
Well, actually, I think the retired population in town is a large number of our users, and now that, okay, I see this is up now.
It is very old-school. I mean, libraries, I would say, mostly the later generations that are used to using it. I, I'm just, I'm just saying, I think it's a big expense, and I don't see that many vehicles out there.
Okay. Where are we going here? So we talk about the nearest library, which would be Brooks. That would cost $62 for a non-resident to get a card there, and that's, that's just one card. So each additional family card is $5. Right now, our budget would cost the taxpayers $26 for every $100,000 value of their homes. So that cost of getting a membership elsewhere really is about the same as what you're paying in your taxes, except, we actually have patrons from Brattleboro come here. It's a bit easier to park. It's just, they like the environment.
Okay, further questions on the library budget? We have a half a dozen people with your hands up. I'm gonna go in the direction that I think I saw the hands up first, this lady right
Elaine Dietrich. I don't know where to start. I love our library. I use it once a week. It's probably saved me thousands of dollars a year in books. It's easy to park. It's easy to park, and I've seen teenagers in there. I've seen mothers with their children. You talk about internet access. There are people in Vernon who do not have internet access, whether they can't afford it or it's not available. There's always somebody in there on the computers. And I have attended some of the authors' discussions. I spoke with a lady, maybe a year or so ago, who was actually from Dummerston. It was about Christmas time. And she was saying, oh, I hope the Vernon Library has more flower arranging classes. And I think she said, talked about Christmas decorations. And it's just, it's a warm, friendly place to go. And there's been discussion in the town about meeting places where the people can get together, and I think the library would be a great place for people to get together. And there's different clubs that you can join, and everybody's just friendly and welcoming. And I would not want to live in a town without a library. It's just a sad commentary on people who want to get rid of our library or cut the budget to the point where it's just not viable anymore. So, yes, please support our library. And if you haven't gone in, or if you don't think it has things to offer, go in and just pop in and wander around and look at the current releases on the stacks and just see people in there, busy, asking questions.
Further discussion on Article Number Five. Couple people in the back of the room, then we'll work our way forward. The gentleman at the back of the room first.
Hi, Jim, listen. Okay, sorry. Jim Belleville. I do think we need to support the library. I come at this wearing actually three hats. One, I'm a real estate agent. I've sold a number of homes in town. And that library is one of the selling points that I point out to people, especially families with young kids. They love having that library. They love having the time for the kids to go in in the mornings, for the toddlers, the summer reading program. It's a phenomenal resource. Two, I'm a book person. Again, I couldn't live in a town without a good library. It would drive me insane. And then the third piece of this, sorry, I lost my track again. I do that. But the other piece of this is, last year, we were discussing the budget cut. We were comparing Vernon's budget to, say, Guilford or Dummerston, which is all well and good, except if you look at the size of their libraries, you look at their hours, they're not comparable at all. They're not even close to what they offer as far as size of the facilities, the amount of time they're open, size of the collection. If you want to compare Vernon, you have to look at towns like Putney, which has that wonderful new library up there that they built a few years back. You go across the river to Chesterfield, their library is similar. And in both those cases, when you look at their budgets, their budgets are close to double, if not more, than what they're asking for this year in order to run a similar program, in order to have similar-sized collections. And, you know, they actually all have larger staffs. That's where their money goes. And I think the cut last year was rather draconic and maybe could have been stepped down so that we could have found a happy medium. But, you know, this is not a resource that, as a town, you want to choke to death until it finally gives up because you're wasting a lot of good talent, good space, and good opportunity for the town for growth and for development. Thank you.
Further discussion on Article Five. Gentleman at the back of the room.
Michael Root. You said you have people from Brattleboro come. What do you charge them?
The library's query.
We have different rates, whether it's for a family or an individual. There's kind of different rates for that. But we do charge for out-of-town. A family is 25. A single card is 15, and seniors are $5.
Further discussion on the article. The lady in the back of the room at the aisle.
Just to answer you, sir, about it, I don't know if anybody has noticed the lovely pictures up there. It caught me by surprise. But the group on the top-left corner, that's a group of homeschoolers that does your library's bulletin boards. I don't know how many of you know, but there's over, at least six families that I can think of off the top of my head in Vernon that are homeschoolers. We can't use the school library, and I think our kids deserve as much of an education as those that come to this school. We use that at least twice a week, if not more. And we also contribute, and we've asked how many more ways we can contribute so that our children can have an education that's equivalent to here. We pay for your taxes for this school, but we don't get to utilize anything out of it. We utilize the library. And Jean, you've done a great job. Thank you. So, quick question, though. Is that a year for out-of-towners that they pay for cards? Or is that monthly? Or is that...
That's for the year. And there aren't that many, but we do charge for the ones that come.
Further discussion on Article Number Five. We'll go to the gentleman up front, then the lady right in back of him, then we'll go over across the aisle.
What access does the elementary school have to use the library? Do they come over all the time and use the library? Is it open access, or is it just by individual?
We would never deny anybody to come in. The school has their own library for their programs. But after-school hours, we're available to anybody.
Are there any programs that, you know, where you can have people, classes come over and use your facility for a program or anything like that?
It doesn't happen that way anymore. The kids stay in the school.
Can it be done? I mean, is that going to affect the budget if they do that?
Certainly would affect my time. But, I mean, they, you know, the kids stay in the school using their own facilities.
Okay. I'm just wondering. And also, what does it cost if I wanted to go to Brattleboro and get into their program and get a card over there? What would it cost me to go there?
$62 for a year.
Thank you.
The lady right in back of him.
Hi, Kristen Dietrich. I guess I just wanted to speak on behalf of the slightly younger generation. And I didn't grow up in Vernon, but since moving here about 10 years ago, I've used the library a lot. And I also, somebody mentioned, well, can't you get everything on the internet now? And I actually do access a lot of the library's services online. I can go to the library's website, and they have their whole card catalog online. So I can go in and say, okay, well, I want to request this book. I can renew my books online. I can do an interlibrary loan, and I can look throughout the state and see that, oh, they have this book, and then call in and have interlibrary loans. So if you have a library card and you want a book from Brattleboro, you can do an interlibrary loan, and they'll drop it off the next day for you. And they also have an online, I think it's called overdrive.com, where you can download up to three audiobooks or eBooks onto a tablet or Kindle, any kind of e-reader, or listen to it on your MP3 player or smartphone or something like that. So there's a lot of resources that you can, people can be using, and they may not even have to come into the library physically in order to use them.
Suddenly, a book dropped. The gentleman over on this side of the room, then we'll go over here, and then we'll come this side.
Just a little follow-up to what you were saying. The library will expand into your life. It's not just going to sit there. And yes, the internet is important, and God knows, I've worked for a number of years to get internet into Vernon. But right now, I belong to the Greenfield Public Library, and there's a thing called Canopy where I can download documentary, these are films, old films, up to 10 a month or nothing. That's what's the future of libraries, is not just going to be the brick and mortar, but they need to be there in order to let the rest of this revolution in media and in news and in information happen. The library allows the town offices to have high-speed internet because they got it. And so that rather than the library becoming an anachronism, it can be, it needs to be supported in order to get us to the next generation of information access.
Further discussion on the article. Mrs. Shirley.
This is a question. You talked about the gift fund. Could you talk a little bit about what that is and what the money does? Because you said book sales go into that. So I was just wondering along with that, if books are bought with tax dollars and then they're sold as excess, why does that money not go back into the treasury to offset that cost rather than a gift fund?
Probably most of the books in our book sale are actually donations. So they're books that people have given to the library to do as we want. A lot of them are, you know, a little bit older, so I'm not going to, I don't have room to put them on the shelves. And we're able to sell them, and people are happy to have us do that for the library to have the money. So really, pretty much, you know, between the book sale, we've had other things set up where people have donated to the library, and that goes into the gift fund. Any of our fundraising campaign goes into that. Did I answer your question? Well, that's what I talked about before. That is the money that we're building right now, because the question was asked before about using that to pay for our budget. But we've only started building that. So we would like to get something significant in there so that then we could take some and invest it and make it work for us, and then have some money to work with. And also, that's also our rainy day fund because we don't have anywhere else in town to go to take care of any emergencies, like computers or, you know, something like that that needed to be tended to in the library. So that... We did have to spend a little. We'll have to spend some this year to cover our budget. Yeah. We're going to be running in a shortfall, but that's, we were given a budget that was not our decision.
Further discussion on the article. The lady in the middle here.
I've made this plea before. As you can see, I am an elderly person, and I am not using the rec. department, which is, has quite a budget compared to what we're asking for tonight. So I exercise my mind instead of going to the rec. department. And with, the budgets just don't compare, obviously. So I'm supporting librarian field. This should be supported, this amount of money.
Gentleman over on this side of the room, and we'll get to a couple more over here.
All questions?
You have to be recognized to be able to call the question, sir.
Call the question.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded, we cease debate on the article. All those in favor of ceasing debate, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. You've passed Article Number Five. We move to Article Number Six. To elect a library trustee to fill the unexpired term of one year through town meeting in March of 2019. Do we have a motion? In the front here, we need a microphone.
Yes, I say we should elect this person.
Well, we need a person to be moved. And I was looking to see if the library people had such a person to be moved.
Somebody stand up, quick.
In back of the room. We have that person to make the motion in back of the room.
Mr. Moderator, I make a motion to elect a library trustee to fill the unexpired term of one year through town meeting in March of 2019.
Do we have a person to be put in that motion? You can't elect somebody without a person.
I'd like to nominate Ellen Hardy.
The name Ellen Hardy has been moved and seconded. Any further nominations? Seeing none, all those in favor of Ellen Hardy being elected as library trustee to fill the unexpired term of one year through town meeting in March of 2019, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. Ruth Kibbe has been elected. Article Number Eight. To elect a library trustee to fill the, excuse me, to fill the term of three years through town meeting in March of 2021. Do we have a motion? Ms. Hardy.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to make a motion to elect Janice Pereira as a library trustee to fill the term of three years through town meeting of 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, that Janice Pereira be elected as library trustee for a term of three years through town meeting in March of 2021. Further nominations? Seeing none, all those in favor of Janice Pereira as a library trustee for three years through March of 2021, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. You've elected Ellen Hardy. Article Seven. To elect a library trustee to fill the unexpired term of one year through town meeting in March 2019. Do we have a motion on the floor? In the middle of the room, yes.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to make a motion to elect Ruth Kibbe as a library trustee to fill the unexpired term of one year through town meeting in March 2019.
Moved and seconded, that Ruth Kibbe be elected to library trustee to fill the unexpired term of one year through town meeting in March of 2019. Discussion or further nominations? Seeing none, all those in favor of Ruth Kibbe, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. Ruth Kibbe has been elected. Article Number Eight. To elect a library trustee to fill the, excuse me, to fill the term of three years through town meeting in March of 2021. Do we have a motion? Ms. Hardy.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to make a motion to elect Janice Pereira as a library trustee to fill the term of three years through town meeting of 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, that Janice Pereira be elected as library trustee for a term of three years through town meeting in March of 2021. Further nominations? Seeing none, all those in favor of Janice Pereira as a library trustee for three years through March of 2021, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. Janice Pereira is elected. Now we go to Article Number Nine. To elect a library trustee to fill the term of three years through town meeting in March of 2021. Do we have a motion? Mrs. Hardy.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to propose a motion to elect Brona Zlockever as a library trustee to fill the term of three years through town meeting in March 2021.
Do we have a second? The motion is that Brona Zlockever be elected as a library trustee for a period of three years. Any other nominations? Seeing none, all those in favor of Brona Zlockever as a library trustee for the next three years, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. You've elected Brona Zlockever. Article Ten. To elect the Marsh Fund Committee. You will find that on page 19 of your annual report. Is there a motion? Mr. Skibnyowski.
Mr. Moderator, I move that Barbara Mosley and James Brown be appointed as the Marsh Fund Committee for this period. Fund Committee for this period.
There, it's been moved and seconded, that Barbara Mosley and James Brown be appointed as the Marsh Fund Committee. Discussion on the motion. Ms. Mosley.
I had a person call me today and would like to become a member of the, uh, Marsh Fund, Marsh Committee. And her name is Dawn Pratt. She's a voter and lives in town on Bemis Road.
So will you make that as an amendment, to add that name as well?
That's correct. I'd like to include her.
Mr. Skibnyowski, do you have any objections to making that a friendly amendment?
Just so I understand, are we replacing one person, or are we adding, we're gonna have three people?
It's a big issue.
So three people then on the Marsh Fund. I have no objection to that.
The Marsh Fund was left by Anna Mash, who was founded the Brathebel Retreat years ago, and she left the money to the town because she supposedly could look across the river and see the people mowing and partying on Sundays. And so she left money for the Marsh Fund. I don't know that we have done much partying with it at all, but I think we could use another member.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the article? Back of the room, Mr. Parker.
I don't know if this is germane, so correct me if I'm wrong. The original fund was set for $2,000, and that was back in 1835. And I see that the churches get a stipend every year, and this year it was $163.14 each, with a balance of $1,047.87. I don't know if I can make a motion, but wouldn't it make sense to just disperse the balance of what there is there? Is this something that's gonna eventually go away, or?
I would say, Mr. Parker, that the motion is out of order. We are not dealing with money there. We are dealing with electing a committee, so you should address your comments to the people elected as the committee.
Okay, thank you.
So again, the motion is that Barbara Mosley, James Brown, and Dawn Pratt be appointed as the Marsh Fund Committee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the article, please say aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes have it. You have passed Article ten. Article eleven, to elect a Memorial Day Committee. Mr. Skibnyowski.
Yes, Mr. Moderator, I move that Peter and Angela Miller be appointed to the Memorial Day Committee.
So, second? Moved and seconded, that Peter and Angela Miller be appointed to the Memorial Day Committee. Discussion on the motion. Seeing none, all those in favor of Peter and Angela Miller being appointed to the Memorial Day Committee, please say aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes have it. The motion has passed. Article twelve, shall the voters appropriate $189,457 for funding of items approved in the capital plan, which by the way, you can find on pages fifteen and sixteen of your town report. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Skibnyowski.
Pardon me?
Mr. Skibnyowski, you have the floor.
Yes, Mr. Moderator, I move that the voters appropriate the sum of $189,457 for the funding of items approved in the capital plan.
So, second? Moved and seconded, that the voters appropriate $189,457 for funding of items approved in the capital plan. Do you wish to speak to your motion?
I would like to give the floor to the Capital Plan Committee for explanation of the proposed capital plan, for any questions that might come up.
Mr. Rappaport, the chair would recognize you at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I've been asked to speak to the items that have changed within the capital plan from the time of the last town meeting up till the present. As you all may know, the capital plan is an ongoing process for budgeting for large expenditures that the town can foresee, and this year, four items have been added to the capital plan. The first is in-ground fuel tanks at the Highway Department Town Garage. It's inevitable that those tanks are going to have to be replaced, and although it's not possible at this point to predict how much the cost is going to be, or exactly when it's going to have to be replaced, it's obviously going to be expensive, and so it was decided that the town should, starting this year, put aside money in the capital plan to cover that expense. And it was agreed that $5,000 should be appropriated this year, and then as more, as we get closer to the replacement time, as there's more information about the exact cost, we would adjust the actual amount appropriated from year to year. In addition, the Highway Department's backhoe will have to be replaced in or around 2029 to 2030, at a projected cost of $168,000. So we should begin appropriating $15,280 per year, beginning with the upcoming fiscal year, 2018, 2019. And just a note about the amounts, there is a policy on the operation of the capital plan, and it provides for spreading out the cost of an item over a given number of years, depending on the size of the amount that needs to be saved up. So if it's a $10,000 item, which would be the minimum for the capital fund, it would only be spread over two years. If it's something that costs $100,000 or $200,000, it would be spread over a much greater period. Another item that's been added to the capital fund this year is a replacement for engine number three at the Fire Department. That's going to have to be replaced in or around 2031 to 2032. That has a projected cost of $300,000, and so based on the policy, we should begin appropriating $21,430 per year, beginning with the upcoming fiscal year. And the last addition to the capital fund is the result of an ongoing energy audit at the town office building. It has shown that various energy efficiency upgrades are going to be necessary to reduce the town's annual heating, fuel costs, and electric power costs, and the projected upgrades will affect various systems within the building and include additional insulation. To my knowledge, the energy audit is not finished yet, but at this point, we do understand that there will be a projected cost of approximately $120,000 for those items I just named, and it was decided that $20,000 per year should be appropriated for this expense, beginning with the upcoming fiscal year. Now, in addition to items that have been added, there were two items that have been removed from the capital plan, which means that money will no longer have to be set aside for them. The town grader has been removed from the capital plan. The Highway Department has determined that it can continue to maintain and repair the equipment for now, and at such time as the major repair is required, the town can then decide whether to repair the grader or rent one as a possible alternative. In addition, formerly, the computers used in the various town offices were purchased all in one large group and included in the capital fund, but the town has decided it would be a better policy to purchase a smaller number of computers as the need arises, and so we might in any given year purchase one or two or three computers rather than 10 all at once. The total amount is not sufficient for that expenditure to be in the capital plan, and so those computers will be paid for out of the budget of the individual offices that use the computers. The only other change on the capital plan that I wanted to note is due to the excellent maintenance by the Highway Department of its vehicles, the useful life of several of the vehicles have been extended for at least another year, and as a result, the amounts that were projected to be appropriated for this year in the ongoing projections for the capital fund, for a three-quarter-ton pickup truck, a one-ton truck, and an international diesel dump truck are going to be spread over the next two years, which reduces the annual appropriation for these vehicles by over $7,000. And the last thing I just wanted to note is that the annual appropriation for the capital fund has been declining over the last several years, and this year's amount is the lowest in the last five years. Thank you.
Further discussion on the article, Mrs. Turnly.
Cindy Turnly, Treasurer. I just wanted to point out to everyone that we are asking to appropriate the funds. We are not going to need to raise any of it by taxes. Just wanted to clarify that for you.
Any further discussion on Article number twelve? Seeing none, again, the article is that the voters appropriate $189,457 for funding of items approved in the capital plan. All those in favor of Article twelve, please say aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes have it. You have passed Article twelve. Article thirteen, shall the voters appropriate $90,550 to be raised by taxes to fund the Town Road Upgrading Fund.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Skibnyowski.
I move that the voters appropriate the sum of $90,550 to be raised by taxes to fund the Town Road Upgrading Fund.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded, that voters appropriate $90,550 to be raised by taxes to fund the Town Road Upgrading Fund. Discussion on the motion, Mr. Skibnyowski.
Just a brief description of the actual activities include Fox Hill, Newton Hills, and Newton Road in this particular cycle.
Further discussion on the motion, lady in the middle here. Wait for the microphone, ma'am. Thank you.
Just a question. I've heard our neighborhood referred to as a Fox Hill neighborhood, which includes Southern Heights Drive and Woodland. Are those streets included in the Fox Hill?
I would defer to the Highway Foreman, who's down in the back of the room, if he could answer that question, ma'am.
The Highway Foreman has been queried, Mr. Walker.
Yes, all three of those are included.
Further discussion on the article. Back of the room, Mr. Gassett.
Could our road commissioner give us any insight into the ongoing saga for Sock Road?
Mr. Walker, you're queried.
Yeah, we're going to try to put a wall up on the hill, and that's all that's gonna be getting done, because they still cannot agree on anything. That's where we are, again.
Further discussion on Article number thirteen. Seeing none, the motion is that the voters appropriate $90,550 to be raised by taxes to fund the Town Road Upgrading Fund. All those in favor of the article, please say aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes have it. You have passed Article thirteen. Article fourteen, shall the voters appropriate $50,000 to be raised by taxes to fund the Town Culvert Fund. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator.
Mrs. Harris.
I move the voters appropriate $50,000 to be raised by taxes to fund the Town Culvert Fund.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, that the voters appropriate $50,000 to be raised by taxes to fund the Town Culvert Fund. Discussion on the motion.
This has to do with a box culvert on Tyler Hill Road, and that's per state. Stormwater rules.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, the motion is that the voters appropriate $50,000 to be raised by taxes to fund the Town Culvert Fund. All those in favor of the article as read, please say aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes have it. You've passed Article number fourteen. Article fifteen, shall the voters appropriate the sum of $2,500 to be raised by taxes to fund the Town Parking Lots Maintenance Fund. Mrs. Harris.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the voters appropriate the sum of $2,500 to be raised by taxes to fund the Town Parking Lots Maintenance Fund.
So, second? Moved and seconded, that the voters appropriate the sum of $2,500 to be raised by taxes to fund the Town Parking Lots Maintenance Fund. Discussion on the motion. Seeing none. In fact, we do have discussion over here.
Heather Frost, I just would like to know what are the, what includes the town parking lots? What parking lots?
The road foreman is queried. Mr. Walker.
Fire station, school, town office, and highway.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article number fifteen as read, please say aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes have it. You've passed Article fifteen. Article sixteen, shall the voters appropriate $25,000 to be raised by taxes to fund the Professional Services Fund. Mrs. Harris.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the voters appropriate $25,000 to be raised by taxes to fund the Professional Services Fund.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, the voters appropriate $25,000 to be raised by taxes to fund the Professional Services Fund. Do you wish to speak to your motion?
I think it's pretty self-explanatory. This is to cover professional services that represent the attorney's fees on utilities.
Any further discussion on the article? Back of the room, Mr. Pond.
I was just kind of wondering, with a balance of $206,629.27, why do we need $25,000 more?
Did you have a question? I apologize, I was distracted for a moment. Okay. Further discussion on the article? Article number sixteen. You call a question?
No. He had a question.
There was another question over there. Mrs. O'Donnell.
Tim, Tim.
Okay, Sandy first, then Patty.
All right, this is down by $10,000, and right now, we're spending around $46,000 a year.
Mrs. O'Donnell.
The money that we use to hire attorneys, somebody to assess the plant, and all of the legal things that we've gotten involved in with the decommissioning of Vermont Yankee, the closing of the plant, and anything else that we need in that process, all comes out of this fund. So we have used a lot of the money in this fund. In fact, without this fund, the town would be in a lot of trouble. We really don't know what the next couple of years are going to bring. I have to say... I have to say that Josh did a layman's job of dealing with North Star and developing a relationship with North Star, which has been a huge asset. So thank you very much, Josh. It's been an amazing asset to this town. But we still have a lot of work to do, and we have no idea what the costs are going to be. So rather than running a budget item in the red, it's smarter to save it, to raise it now in taxes. Thank you.
Further discussion on Article Number 16? Mrs. Pond.
I did just want to clarify that as of now, the balance of that fund is down to
Further discussion on Article Number 16? Gentleman in the back of the room with his voter card and town report held up.
Tom Petuto, it is much cheaper to spend this money now than it is if we fall into a shortfall and don't have the money to provide those legal services.
Further discussion on the article? Over there, Mr. Durrow.
Just curious, is any of these funds used to support the attorney's fees for can, for the New England Coalition Against Bigger Power?
No, it's just our town.
Just our town, period. Who pays for them?
We don't give anybody the can.
Good.
Oh, gosh, damn. We would never give money to those people.
Further discussion, Article 16? Seeing none, the article is that the voters appropriate $25,000 to be raised by taxes to fund the Professional Services Fund. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. You have passed Article 16. The moderator is going to use some discretion here. There is a major storm headed our way on Wednesday. With the way the articles have been going, if we spend another three-quarters of an hour, we can probably get through the rest of them. Would that be the body's wish at this time?
Yes.
Let's rock and roll. Article 17, shall the voters appropriate $26,963 for the Wyndham Solid Waste District Assessment to be raised by taxes to fund the previously established solid waste fund? Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Carr.
I move that the voters appropriate $26,963 for the Wyndham Solid Waste District Assessment to be raised by taxes to fund the previously established solid waste fund.
Do we have a second? Moved and seconded, the voters appropriate $26,000 for the Wyndham Solid Waste District Assessment to be raised by taxes to fund the previously established solid waste fund? Do you wish to speak to your motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that we amend the amount to $19,198, which is the current assessment.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded that the amount be amended to $19,198, which is the current assessment. Do you wish to speak to your motion? With your amendment, that is.
Sure. This is an assessment that must be paid unless we go through the proper procedures to withdraw from the district. Therefore, there is a large amount of work required by the state that is performed by the district on our behalf. So that is what we are supporting.
Further discussion on the proposal of amendment? Back of the room, the lady with a voter card up.
I just have a question, and it's actually for both this and the next one. What is that money for? We're paying for our trash. Does it have anything to do with that?
Either Ms. Carr or Mr. Spencer could answer that question if they are so willing.
I would like to defer to Mr. Spencer.
Mr. Spencer, over here will take a microphone. One coming your way. They're like streetcars.
Hi, Bob Spencer, resident of Vernon and also the executive director of Wyndham Solid Waste District. And there are extensive numbers of programs that the state requires for mandatory recycling, and a lot of it's in education and outreach. It's hazardous waste collection, household hazardous waste collection events. There are now three required per year. It's going to four next year. Towns that have recently looked at going their own outside of a district include Guilford and Dover. And this summer and fall, I worked with them to evaluate that, and they concluded there was no way they could handle doing these things on their own. So there's an extensive list of programs on our website. And we also run our transfer station on Old Ferry Road, which is available to all the residents. You can buy a sticker there. We have quite a few residents in Vernon that buy stickers there. You can recycle just about anything, get rid of paints, electronics. Basically, just about everything that can be recycled in the state of Vermont can be handled at our facility. We also operate the composting program. Vernon is one of the first towns to have composting in their schools. We sell and market a very nice compost product. It's one of the only recyclables that you can use locally. So we have a lot of good programs going on, and most towns conclude it's worth being in the district. But as a kind of a point of order, the town can't really not pay their assessment. There's a process to withdraw from a district, and this, but because we have a dedicated fund, there has to be an appropriation at town meeting to withdraw the money from that fund. That's how I understand it. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Further discussion on the proposal of amendment? Mrs. Lockever.
The one's coming your way.
Why the reduction?
The reduction is basically because the district board closed our material processing facility as of this June. The large processing, if you recall, all the boxes we had at the highway garage for bottles and cans and paper and cardboard, those were removed because we're no longer collecting and processing those materials. Towns are pretty much on their own now. It was a very difficult decision and controversial at the district, mainly dominated by Brattleboro, who has six votes. They wanted to go to single-stream recycling, which is what we have in town. You can put your bottles and cans with your paper and cardboard. Once they voted to do that, 20% of the tonnage that we were processing was gone, and it was no longer economical to operate our facility. So that's the primary, the primary reason that the budget has been reduced, less expense.
Any further discussion on the proposal of amendment? Seeing none, the proposal of amendment is to change the amount to be appropriated to be raised by taxes to $19,198, which is the current assessment. All those in favor of the proposal of amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. The article now reads that the voters appropriate $19,198 for the Wyndham Solid Waste District Assessment to be raised by taxes to fund the previously established solid waste fund. Further discussion on the amended article? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article Number 17 as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. You have passed Article 17 as amended. Article 18, shall the voters appropriate $45,000 for municipal refuse recycling and compost disposal to be raised by taxes to fund the previously established solid waste fund? Is there a motion? Ms. Carr.
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I move that the voters appropriate $45,000 for municipal refuse recycling and compost disposal to be raised by taxes to fund the previously established solid waste fund.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded that the voters appropriate $45,000 for municipal refuse recycling and compost disposal to be raised by taxes to fund the previously established solid waste fund? Do you wish to speak to your motion?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. This covers the transportation and disposal of the townwide recycling, as well as the refuse disposal at the town office building. The pay-as-you-throw-bag fund pays for itself.
Any further discussion on the article? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 18 as read, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. You passed Article 18. Article 19, shall the voters appropriate the sum of $10,000 to be raised by taxes to fund the previously established elderly assistance fund? Is there a motion? Ms. Carr.
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I move that the voters appropriate the sum of $10,000 to be raised by taxes to fund the previously established elderly assistance fund.
Do we? I heard a second over there, right?
Sandy.
Moved and seconded, the voters appropriate the sum of $10,000 to be raised by taxes to fund the previously established elderly assistance fund? Do you wish to speak to your article?
No.
Discussion on the article? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article Number 19 as read, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. You've passed the elderly assistance fund article. Article 20, shall the voters appropriate the sum of $800 to be raised by taxes to fund the Vernon Historians for the purpose of record preservation and retention and promotion of history educational initiatives? Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the voters appropriate the sum of $800 to be raised by taxes to fund the Vernon Historians for the purpose of records preservation and retention and promotion of history educational initiatives.
Moved and seconded that the voters appropriate the sum of $800 to be raised by taxes to fund the Vernon Historians for the purpose of records preservation and retention and promotion of history educational initiatives? Discussion on the article? Mr. Skibniowski.
Just a couple of notes here. As a 501(c)(3), the nonprofit, nonprofit status, the Vernon Historians can control their own budget without passing through the town treasurer, and small bills previously managed by the town treasurer will now be paid directly by the historians.
Further discussion on the article? Seeing none, all those in favor of passing Article Number 20 as read, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. You've passed Article 20. Article 21, shall the voters appropriate $2,000 to be raised by taxes to fund a public fireworks display? Is there a motion? Mr. Skibniowski.
Yes, Mr. Moderator, I move that the voters appropriate the sum of $2,000 to be raised by taxes to fund a public fireworks display.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, the voters appropriate $2,000 to be raised by taxes to fund a public fireworks display? Do you wish to speak to your motion?
Perhaps. No, I don't have anything further to add, although maybe some other people do.
Further discussion on the article? Back of the room, Mr. Pond.
Is there any money pleasantly left over from last year in that fund for this $2,000 added, Josh?
Mr. Durrow.
Cindy should be able to answer that question. I think it's somewhere around like $700 bucks, if I remember right.
Mrs. Turnley is queried.
Cindy Turnley, there presently is $777.23 in that fund, or in that reserve.
Further discussion on the article up front here?
Kristin Dietrich, I know in the past, there's been, this has been a fundraising thing rather than a, something that the town's paid for, and I was just wondering why it's suddenly in the town budget. And also, a lot of people have brought up things that, well, if you, we don't need it here, you could go to the next town over and do it. I know Brattleboro has their own fireworks display, so I'm not sure why we need our own fireworks display when there are surrounding towns that do displays as well.
The board is queried if it chooses. Mr. Durrow.
We don't need anything. It's your choice of what you want to do. This was in the budget for years and years and years, up until, I think, four years ago, it was pulled out, something like that. Actually, right after closure of Vermont Yankee was announced, I think, is when it was pulled out of the budget. There was some fundraising done this last year. There was a nice gift given to us by one of the major companies in town to help pay for last year. We are not confident we're going to get that this year. This is not a, this is not a need. Is it great? Yeah. Does it bring everybody together for a day between the fire muster and the fireworks? It's fantastic. But you decide what you want to do with it.
Further discussion on the article? Back of the room.
Josh, do you, or Cindy, remember how much it cost last year for that amount? And if so, I may, first, can you answer that question?
The treasurer is queried.
I think it was four.
Mrs. Turnley.
I used to spend ten. Because we go five from town, five from the line. I think it was four. She's having a hard time finding it out. I can't see. Yeah, I can't see people's faces. People's faces are fuzzy. Why not in that grave? I'm going to take a stab at it because I got so stinking close with what was left in the account balance, that I'm feeling pretty good. I'm pretty sure it was four grand.
Okay. Then if I can make an amendment to the $2,000 to make it $4,000?
Moved and seconded that the amount in the article be amended to read $4,000. Do you wish to speak further to your amendment?
Like Josh says, it brings the town together between the fireworks, the muster. We used to even have penny carnival at one point, which was great. It does, it brings the people around. It brings us, everybody together. It's a great time. $2,000 for fireworks, it's going to be nothing. You're going to see a couple pops and a bang, and that's going to be about it. So, Bradboro didn't even have fireworks last year because they couldn't raise the monies. So.
Hey, Tim, can I speak?
If we do $4,000, people decide, no, that's not it? Okay, fine. But $4,000, we had a great show.
Further discussion on the proposal of amendment? Mr. Pond.
I think that's a pretty good price, you know, for community camaraderie, you know, for all the stuff that we do all year long. It doesn't hurt one day to get together and enjoy each other, you know, maybe pass the buck, have a soda. I might even suggest if we get a dump tank this year, maybe we can get Josh to volunteer to sit in it.
George, you pay for it, I'll be there.
Further discussion on the amendment proposal? Mr. Belleville.
Jim Belleville, yeah, I think this is one of the things that actually is a selling point for this town. When I tell people that you don't have to go into Bradboro, you don't have to fight the traffic getting in and out of town, you can come on down to the rec center, lay on the ground, and watch the fireworks blow above you. It's awesome. So four grand, it's a drop in the bucket. So let's just get it done.
Any further discussion on the amendment proposal? Again, the amendment is proposed to amend the bottom line on this article to $4,000. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The chair is in doubt. All those in favor of the amendment, please stand.
Wow, that's crazy. I really didn't think it would split.
We could get some of our BCA members to count again?
That's a lot of money. The reason we left that in two is so we could raise it.
Okay. Please be seated. All those against the proposal of amendment, please rise. Listen now to the results of your vote on the proposal of amendment. Those...
I see like...
Tom? Going to make sure we have the entire count here.
It wasn't me.
Okay. Okay, on the proposal of amendment, all those who are voting yes, 43. Those voting no, 35. I declare the amendment has been passed. So, the article was amended for the voters to appropriate $4,000 to be raised by taxes to fund a public fireworks display. Any further discussion?
That's absolutely...
Seeing none, all those in favor of the article as amended, oh, we have, good, thank you. Firstly, Mrs. Turnley.
Cindy Turnley, I'm speaking as a resident, not as the treasurer. With all the cuts we've been talking about, and all the back and forth on the budget, and with people's jobs getting cut, and hours getting cut, I can't understand paying $4,000 for fireworks when people's hours are being cut, jobs have been cut, and we just cut our sheriff's department. Just as a resident and a taxpayer, I just don't see the feasibility of funding this, but...
Further discussion. Mr. Keats. Can we do a friendly amendment? If we have a balance of 770, take that away from the four. Would the people involved in the article and the amendment be good with that?
It has to be an amendment to the amendment.
Hold on one second, we're straightening this out first. Okay, so, the friendly amendment would be to reduce the 4,000 by the 770 still in the balance, which would make it...
3,223.
What, for a bottom line? So, that is your new number for the article, $3,223. Further discussion on the article as amended. The gentleman over here.
So, Shippy, didn't we already vote on this? So, can't we not reopen?
No, we actually voted on the proposal of amendment, and this is a friendly amendment on the article as amended.
Okay.
Thank you for asking, though. It is getting late. Any further discussion on the article as amended? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 21 as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The chair again is in doubt. All those in favor, please rise and have the BCA do a count here. Please be seated. All those against the article as amended, please rise. Please listen to the results of your vote. Those voting yes, 39. Those voting no, 37. I declare the motion and the article have passed. Article 22, shall the voters appropriate the sum of $6,600 to be raised by taxes to support the Southeastern Vermont Economic Development Strategies, or SEVeds, to provide workforce and economic coordination services to residents of the town of Vernon added by petition. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Skibniowski.
I move that the voters appropriate the sum of $6,600 to be raised by taxes to support Southeastern Vermont Economic Development Strategies to provide workforce and economic coordination services to residents of the town of Vernon.
There a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, that the voters appropriate the sum of $6,600 to be raised by taxes to support Southeastern Vermont Economic Development Strategies to provide workforce and economic coordination services to residents of the town of Vernon. Do you wish to speak to your motion?
Only to say, Mr. Moderator, this was by petition, and I believe that this organization does provide some useful service to the town.
Thank you. Further discussion on the article.
Tim.
Mr. Unruh.
So, I speak to the nonprofits on a regular basis, and those that come to us asking for money, and I don't support any of them through tax rolls, I just don't. SEVeds is a great organization. RT and I get along very, very well, and he spent the whole night here waiting for this article to come up. But, it's just simply not something that I can support as a taxpayer. If you want to support, you know, nonprofits through your own pocket, go for it, don't ask me to do it out of mind.
Back of the room.
Andrew Gant. We had discussed this the past couple of years. We really shouldn't be forcing our townspeople to donate their money anywhere else. If you want to give to these organizations, feel free, but please don't force me or anyone else in this room that may not have the funds and their taxes to give up for it. Thank you.
Further discussion on the proposed article. Mrs. O'Donnell.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Normally, I've always hated to see this nonprofit stuff in the budget. SEVeds is different. SEVeds is a business organization, or it's a nonprofit, but it's a business organization. We have had a lot of people in our community out of work, and they've gotten help from SEVeds and BDCC. BDCC's board sent a letter to the Public Utilities, whatever their new name is, anyway. The people deciding on the sale of Entergy to North Star, supporting the town, they're working hand in hand with the town, helping us to redevelop, to make a difference in what our future's going to be. I've always voted against this stuff. But, there's a difference between voting against something that has a nonprofit, that organization that helps this group, this group, this helps us all. If we can redevelop this town, and we can make this town, give this town a shot in the arm, and make it something that it isn't today, we'll have been successful. The Planning Commission is working really, really hard to do that, but we can't do this work alone. We need organizations like SEVeds and BDCC to help us do this. So, it's a lot of money, it's a nonprofit organization, it's a nonprofit organization. Normally, I don't support these, but I do support this town, and I want to see this town grow, develop, and get better. So, we're going to need all the help we can do, so please do support this. Thank you.
Further discussion on the article. Seeing none, the article is read, is that the voters appropriate the sum of $6,600 to be raised by taxes to support Southeastern Vermont Economic Development Strategies to provide workforce and economic coordination services to residents of the town of Vernon. All those in favor of the article, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The nays appear to have it. The nays have it. You have defeated Article 22. Article 23, shall the voters appropriate the sum of $15,000 to be raised by taxes for the operation of the Emergency Management Office. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Skibniowski.
I move that the voters appropriate the sum of $15,000 to be raised by taxes for the operation of the Emergency Management Office.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, the voters appropriate the sum of $15,000 to be raised by taxes for the operation of the Emergency Management Office. Discussion on the motion?
Yes, I'd like to speak to several elements of this motion. For many, many years, we've had emergency response in town, supported largely by Entergy, and prior to them, Vermont Yankee. Currently, we, that part of our existence is phasing out, and we are taking on more of that responsibility ourselves. I think it's also very important to remember that the hazards that we face in this town are not solely from the nuclear plant. There are other kinds of things that we need to be prepared for, and such things as transportation accidents, and other kinds of activities that we've actually experienced here in the recent past. These, or this money will go towards providing residents who need assistance during the time of evacuation, and also, money for evaluating the relocation of the EOC, and of course, emergency plans review for the Vernon School, Vermont Yankee, particularly the rail traffic that goes through town, and I know many of you have seen that increase significantly in the recent past. And, of course, evaluating specific hazards from certain areas of town, including things like the Vernon Green and Huckle Hill complex, where there are special considerations there to be taken into account should an emergency occur. So, I highly support this money to be spent in this manner.
Further discussion on Article 23. In the middle of the room, over on this side, gentleman with a voter card up.
Carol Howe. First of all, I'd like to know how much, if there's any, reserve in this fund, and how much was spent last year on this.
The board and their administration is queried.
I got it, Tim.
Mr. Unruh.
Cindy can correct me on this, but I don't think there's anything in the fund, and we spend the $15,000 every year.
Further discussion on the article. Yes, you, it's getting late, I'm forgetting names.
Just a, Munson Hicks. Just a question then, on page 31, we say miscellaneous appropriations, emergency management of $15,000, of which 2,900 was spent, leaving a balance of 12,000. Is that the same?
Cindy Turnley, they asked to carry that money over into this year because of, for relocation expenses, because they're going to have to relocate the EOC. So, that money is not available, it's already spoken for. You will.
Further discussion on the article. Seeing none, again, the article is that, oh, that is not a registered voter that's holding up that voter card, right? Okay, just checking. Want to make sure that he has a chance to speak if he wants to. Again, the article is, okay, again, the article is that the voters appropriate the sum of $15,000 to be raised by taxes for the operation of the Emergency Management Office. All those in favor of the article, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. You've passed Article 23. Article 24, to see if the town will vote to set a price of $100 plus the cost of cornerstone for cemetery cremation lots. Is there a motion? Mr. Unruh.
I wish I had one. I have this great little cheat sheet up here, and it's got nothing on it.
Oh, excuse me, should that be Mr. Skibniowski instead?
No, it's fine. I move, I move that the town will vote to set a price of $100 plus the cost of cornerstone for the cemetery cremation lots.
Second.
Moved and seconded, that the town vote to set a price of $100 plus the cost of cornerstone for cemetery cremation lots. Discussion on the motion. Back of the room, Mr. Gassett.
Dale Gassett, I'm curious as to what is the difference between a regular cemetery lot and a cremation lot?
Mrs. Sherlin can answer that question, and we'll recognize her for that purpose.
I can answer that question, too. It's just tiny.
A regular lot is the size for a casket. A cremation lot, we had leftover, I guess you call it, leftover land in North Cemetery and Tyler Cemetery, when they laid out the expansions, so they put in smaller, they're like, was it three by five? No, three by five spots, that only are big enough to hold like two urns in them, and we've never set a price for those. So, and they kind of are on the outside of the fence area, not outside the fence, but along the fence areas, most of them. Did that answer?
Further discussion on the article. Seeing none, again, the article is that the town vote to set a price of $100 plus the cost of cornerstone for the cemetery cremation lots. All those in favor of the article as read, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. You've passed Article 24. Article 25, shall the voters authorize payment of real and personal property taxes to the town treasurer in three installments, with the due dates being September 13th, 2018, January 17th, 2019, and May 2nd, 2019. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Unruh.
I move that the voters authorize payment of real and personal property taxes to the town treasurer in three monthly installments, with the due dates being September 13th, 2018, January 17th, 2019, and May 2nd, 2019.
Moved and seconded, that the voters authorize payment of real and personal property taxes to the town treasurer in three monthly installments, with the due dates being September 13th, 2018, January 17th, 2019, and May 2nd of 2019. Discussion on the motion. Seeing none, all those in favor of the article as read, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. You've passed Article 25. Article 26, shall the voters approve the scheduling of the 2019 Town and Town School District meeting at 9:00 a.m. on Tuesday, March 5th, 2019. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Unruh.
I move that the 2019 Town Meeting be scheduled for Tuesday, March 5th, 2019, at 9:00 a.m.
Moved and seconded, that the 2019 Town Meeting be scheduled for Tuesday, March 5th, 2019, at 9:00 a.m. Is there discussion on the motion?
Yes, I'd like to speak to the motion, please.
Mr. Unruh.
This will essentially make your Town Meeting an all-day event. Will disqualify many people that work to be able to come to this, come to Town Meeting. I do not support this amendment in any way, shape, or form. It's probably one of the worst articles that I've seen come about at Town Meeting, honestly. And, we need to allow all of Vernon residents to be able to participate in Town Meeting, and by doing this, you are severely cutting that.
Chair would recognize Ms. Carr.
I'm the one that proposed this article. After I was elected last year, I had many people say to me that they would take a day off from work rather than sit here all night. And that was, in response to that, I did propose this article, and I think it would work for a lot of people. So, that's why it's out there for your decision.
Further discussion, back of the room, Mr. Gant.
I completely understand being, I would love to have this just be an all-day event. 90% of us can't afford for it to be an all-day event. I can't afford to take off a day from work, to be able to have my voice heard at my Town Meeting. I can't believe this even made it onto the board. Thank you.
Further discussion on the article, Mrs. Rasmussen.
I completely agree. It's not possible for many of us, myself included, to take an entire day off from work. I'm willing to commit one evening of my life, once a year, to come to Town Meeting, but I'm not willing to not get paid for an entire day.
Further discuss, what was that? Further discussion, Mr. Belleville.
Um, just two quick points. When I was growing up, this was the way it was done. Tuesday, all the, you know, everybody went in first thing in the morning. It was an all-day event. You had a, a fundraiser or something, dinner in the middle of the day that the school was putting on or whatever, and then it was done. Um, and then, my second point is, um, someone once told me that, you know, their look on something like this is that, you know, unfortunately, democracy isn't free. If democracy is important to you, sometimes you need to make that sacrifice. Now, I'm not saying that you want to be, you know, that this should be exclusionary, but, you know, that is, playing devil's advocate, that's just, you know, I wanted to put that out there.
Back of the room, Mr. Wildin.
Move the question.
Amen.
Moved and seconded that we cease debate. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. You've ceased debate on the article. All those in favor of moving the 2019 town meeting to be scheduled for Tuesday, March 5th, 2019, at 9:00 AM, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The nays appear to have it. The nays have it. You have defeated the article. Article 27, shall the voters approve the provision of notice of availability of the town report and auditor's report by postcard mailed to all registered voters at least 30 days prior to town meeting, in lieu of mailing or otherwise distributing the town report and auditor's report as authorized by Vermont law and 24 VSA subsection 1682A2. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Unruh.
I move that the voters approve the provision of notice of availability of the town report and auditor's report by postcard mailed to all registered voters at least 30 days prior to town meeting, in lieu of mailing or otherwise distributing the town report and auditor's report as authorized by Vermont law, 24 VSA.
There a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, the voters authorize the provision of notice of availability of the town report and auditor's report by postcard mailed to all registered voters at least 30 days prior to town meeting, in lieu of mailing or otherwise distributing the town report and auditor's report as authorized by Vermont law, 24 VSA. Discussion on the motion.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Unruh.
This is just reconfirming what we do already.
Further discussion on the reconfirmation.
Yes.
Seeing none, all those in favor of the article as read, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. You have passed Article 27. Article 28, to discuss any other non-binding business. Mrs. Turnley.
I'm Cindy Turnley, Treasurer. I just wanted to let you know, um, now that we've got everything voted in, per $100,000, your taxes, your taxes will be down $17. Uh, you've, you've lowered your tax rate. Your municipal tax rate. Doesn't count the school, just the town, but, yeah. It's the, it's the school, the town portion, but it is down.
Any further discussion on the other business?
No, sir.
Just a moderator's prerogative. This has been my 20th year as town moderator, and so far, this has been the best. Thank you all. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
And we did it in a night.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. We're adjourned, we're out of here. Good night, everybody.